I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the Pedaluma City School Board of Education. If you would all join me and rise for the pledge of allegiance. And, Mr. LaBarrow, would you mind leaving us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we're gonna hit the ground running here. We've got a lot of folks. Do we have the air position now? Alright, and if you all would do me the favor too, and take your phones out, flip them to off, or vibrate, or whatever it is that you're doing to make them not make noise, that'd be really helpful. We're gonna go right to the first item. Oh, that's right, that's cool. So, Mr. Badley is not here tonight, and because Mr. Badley is not here, we need to replace him as clerk temporarily for the night, for this meeting, so I would like to ask Sheri, would you even mind being in the room tonight?
Absolutely.
I would need a motion for that. That's second.
Second, aye.
Is there anybody in favor of that? Aye. Okay, you're it. Very good. Okay, there's a lot of responsibility to go through that, sir. Alright, so we're gonna go right to the public hearing. This is a contract reopeners with the Pedaluma Federation of Teachers for the 2014-2015 year. This is a public hearing that we're gonna conduct regarding contract reopeners between the Pedaluma Federation Teachers and the Pedaluma City School District. So, this is kinda one of those, again, funny procedural things where I open the public hearing, and does anybody have any public comments on the side? And seeing no one rise, can I get you to not be at the podium? Can we get you on a table or somewhere else? Thanks. Alright, seeing no one rise, we're gonna close it. That item is closed. Alright, so let's move on to item F, adoption and approval of the agenda.
What's the move?
One second.
All those in favor of the agenda as it is?
Aye.
Alright, opposed? We're gonna play it exactly as it sits. Very good. Moving on to item G, approval of the minutes. I believe everybody is eligible voting on those minutes?
Yes.
So I'll take a motion on that. I got Mary's motion, and...
Second.
All those in favor of the minutes as presented?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Minutes go as presented. Alright. Okay. Alright, we're gonna go on to the fun part of the meeting now, which is Students of the Month. So we've got, hopefully our student representatives are all here. I had a note that, Miles, I see you in my...
Yeah.
We're good?
Yeah.
You got it ready?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't want to make a hand if you don't, so...
No, I just...
Very good. So this is Students of the Month. So we'll start off with Kennelworth. Could I get the Kennelworth student representative up here? Sixty-one? I'll walk you through it. You're the first one, sorry. Alright, so the way that this works is your student representative's gonna come up here, they're gonna introduce the Student of the Month. You're gonna walk up here, I'm gonna hand you a plaque, and you're gonna very awkwardly stand right here in front of this camera, and for what'll seem like ever. We'll YouTube it, we'll send it out on Facebook, or whatever you gotta do. You'll be kinda like this, and it's really cute, and you'll keep it for a long time, alright? So, we'll start with Kennelworth. Who do we have?
Kennelworth Junior High is pleased to introduce the February Student of the Month, Dominic Lewis.
Dominic has been nominated for Student of the Month by most senior teachers because
he is an enthusiastic participant in class. He has a great sense of humor and helps make the classroom a positive place. He is very responsible, thoughtful with his work, and well-liked by everyone. Ms. Bradley, the digital media teacher, had this to add. Dominic has been an active member of the early on students-run KTV new show at Kennelworth since the seventh grade. He runs the professional broadcast equipment that makes our show so great. He is a conscientious and hard-working teacher whose maturity does not get in the way of his ability to have fun. When he is not at school, Dominic can be found to do the aqueducts, which he's done since he was eight, wakeboarding, stepboarding, or even paddleboard. He also likes playing around in the sculpture, a 3D graphic art software using his new 3D printer compared to books. He especially likes making short movies and videos of additional video. He and another student have produced a short film for the first-ever White House Film Festival. He is waiting to hear from President Obama if his film has been chosen as a winner. After high school, Dominic is hoping to go to a good college where he considers engineering and continuing to spend. Dominic's family have this to add. We are so proud of Dominic. He works hard at everything he does. Watching him grow up into such an amazing young man makes us so happy. Congratulations, Dominic.
Well, that's our first one. Congratulations. We also wanna take this opportunity to recognize the fact that Dominic's success in school and in his community is often a product of the people around him. So, those who are here to support Dominic tonight, if you can stand up, we acknowledge you.
Kennelworth Junior High School is pleased to introduce the February Student of the Month, Emily White.
You know the girl.
Emily has been awarded Student of the Month by her teachers because she is an extremely hard-working student who puts a great deal of effort into everything she does. She has great energy and is always positive. She always brightens a class with her smile and friendly attitude. Emily makes class fun. As class secretary, Emily has been very active in Ms. Farrell's leadership. Ms. Farrell has this to add. Emily is an incredible student who is extremely respectful and is always friendly in her reading to her classmates. She is a natural leader with tremendous creativity. She has also been a major contributor to advertising ideas and leadership and for KTV. In addition, Emily has participated on the Kennelworth track in seventh grade and plans to participate again this year. Emily's achievements outside of school have been exemplary. While living in Germany during grades two through six, she's become fluent in German. While there, she volunteered at the children's hospital assisting in the planning of parties for long-term patients. In sixth grade, she played for a softball team that traveled to Switzerland for an international tournament. In her free time, Emily enjoys playing tennis with her stepfather and golfing with her mom. After graduation, she transferred from Duke University in North Carolina to study to be an oncologist and to be her father-in-law. Emily's parents are very proud of her. They have this to add. As a daughter, Emily is a trade roller. I've never had a ground or been disappointed in her. Her expectations of herself have always set a higher standard. I'm consistently amazed with her. She is serious, yet light-hearted, and takes everything in stride. We cannot be any prouder for all her accomplishments. Congratulations, Dominique.
And then these students of family.
Taylor Vock has been chosen as the February Student of the Month at Pedaluma Junior High School. Right, sweet and articulate, Taylor Vock has been chosen as the February Student of the Month at Pedaluma Junior High School. Taylor is hard-working, diligent student who takes pride in producing high-quality work. She enthusiastically enjoys learning and approaches every day and moment with a positive attitude. Teacher state, Taylor is a bright student who consistently produces quality work and is always willing to help in whatever way she can. She demonstrates a sincere desire to actively participate and can always be counted on to do her best. Her positive attitude influences others and makes her a joy to have in the classroom. Teacher, Taylor has earned Principal's Gold and Silver Renaissance Award and is on the honor roll at PJHS. Outside of school, Taylor is very close with her family and enjoys spending time at home. She is very self-motivated and happiest when being creative. For example, she is often in the kitchen experimenting beyond a recipe, developing new culinary creations for her family to enjoy. At other times, she's in the backyard collecting ivy that's from nature and turning them into artistic crafts. She has a special bond with her father, whom she often hangs out with in the garage. Together, they develop projects out of available materials. Taylor has a passionate drive towards hands-on projects. To expand on her talents, Taylor has signed up for woodshop next year at Pedaluma High School. Her future goals include maintaining her grades so she can attend a good college. She is not sure what she will major in, but is excited about the possibilities. Her parents state, Taylor is truly a gift to us. She was an independent and curious child. She is very creative and loves to make experiments in the garage or in the kitchen. She loves a variety of music, which is always well in her home. She is proven herself responsible, thoughtful, and respectful. She is her sister's best friend and a wonderful role model. We are proud to have Taylor as our daughter. Congratulations, Taylor Vock. Danny Marzo has also been chosen as the February Student of the Month at Pedaluma Junior High School. An exceptional and outstanding student, Danny Marzo has been selected as Student of the Month at Pedaluma Junior High School. Earning 4.0 grade point average while taking accelerated classes, Danny is on the Principal's honor roll and has earned Gold Renaissance Awards. All teachers agree that it is a pleasure to have Danny in class. They state, his positive attitude, outgoing personality, and genuine interest in learning is a positive influence on his peers. Danny is smart, hard-working, consistently strives to do his best, and diligent about completing his work and doing it well. He is a very dedicated student and gives 100% of his effort to excel every day. He is very well-liked by his peers, is helpful to everyone, and has a great friendly competitive spirit. Willing to take risks, Danny is a leader in the classroom, opening doors for others to participate in classroom discussions and activities. One teacher spoke for all, and he said, "I wish I could have a student like Danny in my class every year." Danny is involved in numerous extracurricular activities. Loving sports, he plays baseball, basketball, and track. He was on the PJHS-based basketball team in seventh and eighth grade, playing shooting guard for an undefeated two-year run. On the track team in seventh grade, he broke the mile record for PJHS with hopes to break his own record this year in the eighth grade. Outside of school, Danny plays baseball for a team called Solders in Morgan Hill as his center fielder and pitcher. He goes for three-to-five mile runs in the neighborhood and works out at Loomah Fitness. Danny feels lucky to be able to play sports with all of his closest friends. In addition, Danny enjoys listening to music and spending time with his friends. He also helps out at the family business on weekends. Willing to do whatever needs to be done, Danny comes from a very close family and feels a special bond with his father, seeing him as a role model to take after. Danny's future goals include attending a good four-year university, possibly Duke University in Durham, North Carolina. Interested, he has fun looking up the most advanced classes offered at the college on the Wikipedia website. Danny's career interests include being a lawyer or sports analyst. Danny's parents state, "We are proud of Danny's accomplishments. Danny has learned a lot from his teachers, friends, and the administration in his three years at PJHS. Danny is a very driven individual. He takes his education seriously. He is a loyal friend and competitor in all aspects of his life. It is a great honor for us to have Danny selected as Student of the Month. Congratulations, Danny."
How about the Marzo, LaBarrow, Ellis, and Ephy? Alright, let's get Cos. Grande up here. Miles, you're up. Always out dressing me again, look at you. Starting?
Hello, I'm here, and I'm pleased to present the February Student of the Month Award to Valerie Chavez.
Valerie, you got a lot when the principal wants to get out, to get out of the way. Congratulations.
Valerie Chavez was born to Marcos and Sylvia Chavez. Her parents immigrated from Mexico and El Salvador, respectively, and she'll be the first in her family to go to college. She speaks fluent Spanish and is the eldest of four siblings, one of which was born three months ago. She's an officer in the student-run organization Health Occupation Students of America and is a member of Friday Night Live, which helps promote awareness and underage drug and alcohol abuse. She's also a member of the Pedaluma City Youth Commission and is currently Youth Co-Chair of the Employment Subcommittee in the Commission and Planning of Job Fair. She has been a member of the Casa Grande Band since freshman year, and it has been her talent for the flute and volunteering, excuse me, used her talent for the flute to volunteer her church as the flutist in the church choir. Valerie plans to go to college and major in biochemistry with the hopes of attending medical school and becoming an ER doctor. Once again, that's Valerie Chavez.
Looks like our second Casa Grande student's in the middle of a basketball game, so we will have him back next time. So let's go to Pedaluma High School.
Alright, Pedaluma High School is proud to present Nick Provanzano as one of our February Students of the Month. Nick Provanzano is seventeen years old and has attended school in the Pedaluma High School City, or Pedaluma City School District since kindergarten. Not only has Nick received a good education, he has also learned to see greater things for himself. Nick was told that he was chosen for this recognition partly based on his GPA. Not long ago, however, his GPA was far from noteworthy. While in junior high, Nick received primarily Bs and Cs, the majority of which being Cs. He figured he was a C student. However, entering high school, something changed. By some clue, Nick received his first 4.0 on the first six-week progress report of freshman year, and something clicked. Nick did not want to see those As progress any further through the alphabet and was determined to maintain them. From that semester through his senior year, Nick has consistently maintained straight As except for his Spanish III class. This change in attitude was the key to setting and achieving goals. It turned out the advice from teachers and his parents to apply himself wasn't completely bogus, and that in fact, it's possible to improve yourself if the effort is put in. Nick used what he had learned to eventually land a job at In-N-Out Burger, where he, for a long time, had hoped to have his first job. Nick is currently working at In-N-Out Burger, serving the community with delicious food, or rather, humbly staring as the community eats the delicious food right in front of him. Nick hopes to one day become a veterinarian. Ever since he can remember, he has always wanted to help animals, particularly abused ones. And being a veterinarian, he will be able to do just that. Nick can honestly think of nothing he would rather do for a living. He doesn't see himself in a cubicle, but rather working in a hands-on environment where he will be doing what he has dreamed of doing for years. While there will be sad moments, there will also be the rewards of healing our furry friends. The lessons he has learned from Pedaluma schooling will hopefully lead him to achieving his lifelong goal. Nick sums up what he has learned over the past few years with the words of Rod Kimball, stunt man extraordinaire. "You have only to believe if you wish to achieve." That rhyme, unintentional.
Pedaluma is happy to present Sadie Dickinson as one of our Student of the Months for February. Sadie Dickinson is a senior at Pedaluma High School and is very involved with academics, extracurricular activities, and friendships. In December, she received her first college acceptance from Chapman University, where she was admitted into their prestigious acting program in the Dodge School of Media that only accepts fourteen kids a year. She has yet to hear back from other schools, but her other top choices along with Chapman are USC, University of San Diego, Cal Poly, and UCLA. Sadie is currently ranked eighth in the senior class and has taken on a challenging workload this year with seven classes. She has managed to receive straight As in each of these tough courses and plans to maintain these good grades for the home stretch of the high school career. This year, Sadie is an honors competitor on the academic decathlon team at Pedaluma High School, where she recently brought home a bronze medal for her speech and a silver medal for her essay from the regional competition. Along with her academic involvement in school, Sadie has been a part of the leadership class for all four years of high school and currently serves as rally commissioner, planning and hosting all school pep rallies. You can also listen for Sadie every morning over the loudspeaker, serving as Pedaluma High School's weekly weather woman. In addition, this past October, Sadie was crowned Pedaluma High School's Homecoming Queen. She is currently spending a significant amount of time rehearsing for Pedaluma High School's spring production for Legally Blonde, the musical, where she plays the lead role of Elle Woods. Over her four years at Pedaluma High School, Sadie has been a member of many clubs, has planned many school events, and has wrapped up over a hundred and thirty hours of community service. Although she has little to no free time, Sadie also makes sure that she nurtures her relationships with her family and friends. She will definitely miss Pedaluma High School, but she is also very prepared for college. Congratulations, Sadie.
That is always the most enjoyable part of these meetings. Not that the rest is bad, but that's just very enjoyable. So I'd like to draw your attention to the wall over here on the side of the room, which you will see going back to, I believe it's nineteen eighty-one or eighty-two. All Students of the Month. So you give us a little bit of time, we'll engrave your name up there, and it will be there forever. And get you, some of you who heard the speech, before we give you a key to the room, to the staff, break room back there, and you can come anytime you want, just in the middle of the night if you wanna show it off. So, if you have friends or relatives coming to town, also comes with a bunch of fabulous gifts. But most of all, most of all, in all seriousness, it comes with our gratitude because there are seven thousand five hundred and twenty-two students in this district, I think as of yesterday. And tonight, we had eight, or seven, but there is an eight. So, some of you brainiacs can do the air math on that, but that's pretty darn good for those of you that showed up here tonight. And we are very, very proud of you, and we wanna thank you because a lot of people put a lot of work into providing you the education that you've been afforded, not only your parents, but the people that show up at the school five o'clock in the morning to turn the lights on, and the people that show up at the school at ten o'clock at night to turn them off, and all the other folks that drive you to and from, and teach you, and support you, and feed you, and make sure that you're safe. All that they do, it makes them feel very good, and it makes us feel very good to hear success twice as likely here. So thank you very much for that. We appreciate it. So, we are going to take a short break here because we've got a full house, and then there's another topic that a bunch of people like to speak about. So, we'll take a two-minute break. You gotta be orderly and quick if you wanna get out. We want you to stay in the back. Do what you do. Just go where you go.
Are you introducing?
I think she could go home with me. And just a second, David, I got a quick thing I wanna say before we start. So just stick with us. As soon as we find Phoebe. We lost Phoebe.
She's out with her family in the bathroom.
Alright, I'm just missing one board member. Do I have any volunteers to sit in for me? Hang on just a second. See if you can get her back there. Well, let me do this while we're waiting for the board. If anybody would like to speak tonight, we're gonna need a yellow speaker card, and they're in the back. And I believe we have a large contingent from Live Oak, and we have a leader, someone in here.
I'll bring all the first-up speakers, and we know we have plenty of time.
Okay, so you can... I love a guy that knows the rules. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So you'll bring them all up then?
I will.
Very good. So if anybody else would like to speak on any item on or off the agenda, like to speak to a public comment, or if you'd like to speak on an agenda item, it will just be one of these. Alright, so, we're back. Everybody good?
Okay.
Officially, we're back. So Safe School Ambassador Program. Mr. Stewart, would you like to lead us on?
Sure. The Safe School Ambassador Program has been in existence at Pedaluma High for about four years, and at Pedaluma Junior, I believe, for, this is the first year so far. So we have a joint presentation between the two schools, and part of that is, between Ms. Semick and myself, is a desire to really grow the connection between Pedaluma Junior High and Pedaluma High School, so it really feels like a six-through twelve school, and people feel comfortable with that going in. And part of that is safe schools. So, I also want to first compliment Dave Rose, who did a lot of work on this over the years, first through Challenge Day, and then by supporting us in Community Matters through Safe School Ambassadors. So, let me invite Jennifer Limbus, who is Pedaluma High's Safe School Ambassador Director. So, Jen.
Hello. Thank you for having us. We did our two-day training here in October in the boardroom, and we've done it in the past, and we've always felt such a warm welcome from the district office when we've come here to do our training, and this last year, we thought it would be a really nice thing to share with you, so that you know what we're doing, and so that you can support us hopefully too, and what we're trying to do for our students and our schools. So, just a little background, Safe School Ambassadors Program was founded in the year 2000, and it's administered through Community Matters, which is a group, is that correct? Based in Sabaco. And Safe School Ambassadors is a national program that deals with kind of creating a positive school climate and helping students to transition from being bystanders to upstanders, so giving them tools that they can use in just their daily existence with who they are, and helping them be more equipped. And the assumption behind this program is that the adults on campus, the administrators, the counselors, the teachers, the staff, that they don't see everything that happens. And as a teacher, we know that. We try to, and we try to connect with our students as much as we can, but we have a lot of students, especially in the high school level and the junior high level, and you can't see everything and know everything. So this really puts a lot of trust in the students, who do know what's going on, and who are out there with each other, seeing things that we don't see, and it trains them on how to deal with things, and then how to know when to come to adults. So, when we recruit students into this program, because it's not a club, it's a program, so it's something that takes a lot of effort to build and resources, we look for students that have several qualities about them, and you'll meet some of them later. Students that are socially influential in their circle of peers, so students who are listened to by their friends and respected, and students who would speak their minds even if their ideas aren't popular, who would stand up for what's right, and students who have a strong sense of social justice, so they wanna watch out for people, they're concerned for their peers, they wanna make sure that people are okay at school and having an okay time.
which is singling someone out, physical, so that's actual physical acts towards a person, and acts against campus such as vandalism in textbooks, in walls, anywhere around campus.
So the main actions that SSA members are trained to know is the balancing, which is basically saying something positive about the person or group that's being put down. And supporting is trying to help someone feel better about their feelings that have been hurt. And reasoning is helping a person think about their choices or consequences of their actions, and distracting, or reasoning, I'm sorry, reasoning, is helping a person think about the choices or consequences of their actions, and distracting is drawing attention from an act of cruelty or mistreatment. And directing is telling a person that what they're doing is not okay and that it needs to stop. And listening is listening and noticing and responding to a person's thoughts and feelings. And getting help is going to a leader and teacher or administrator at school that for a specific, for a specific type of bullying that you cannot handle by yourself, that you need assistance in feeling.
Thank you.
All right. And my name's Nancy Manuelli, I'm Assistant Principal at Petaluma Junior, and I assist in coordinating our Safe School Ambassadors Program at Petaluma Junior. So why SSA at Petaluma High and Petaluma Junior? What we really like about the Safe School Ambassador Program is it is kind of an organic approach to school climate, it is an inside-out approach, as was said earlier this evening. Students at any given time know far better than most of us adults do on campus what's going on. The program invites and selects through peer nominations and adult nominations the students who are invited to participate and be trained in this, so they are socially influential and really have the opportunity to work change within the groups that they work in and live with in our school. What we also, what I also wanted to say was that there's, so for example, you have about 85% of your student population are considered to be bystanders, these are the people who see what's going on. Your other 15%, half on each other end of the spectrum are the students who are sometimes doing the negative events or actually trying to actively keep those things from happening. So we want to mobilize, or as Safe School Ambassador's founder says, wake up the courage in those bystanders to turn them into what we call upstanders. We also like the consistency of the program, it's not a one-shot deal. We have meetings every two weeks with all of our small family groups, they have an agenda, they do some icebreakers, they do some team building, some skill building, so we like that consistent approach through the school year. And another very important piece for us is the articulation from Petaluma Junior to Petaluma High. So we actually invited one of the Safe School Ambassadors from Petaluma High to come to our small family group meetings today, and met with the whole group and invited them to continue their practice when they come to Petaluma High. So those are some of the reasons why we really like the idea of the Safe School Ambassadors Program at the junior high as well as at the high school.
Hi, I'm Sarah Hawkins. And what we do with the training, what we did at the training was, it was basically just getting to know like our different techniques and like the different forms of bullying. And like Ms. Manuelli was saying, like we did a couple icebreakers and it was just kind of a way to get to know each other and to know who we're working with when like going around the school. And in our like family group meetings, we will sit around and talk about what we've been seeing, and it's like we support each other for like what we've been like seeing around campus, and we have action logs where we fill out like the types of mistreatment we've seen, we've been seeing and how we've dealt with them, and that ties into our action snapshot campaign. And on about average, we had about one action log filled out per day, and what we mostly saw was, you know, exclusions and put-downs throughout the school. And, yeah.
Hi, I'm Renee Semenek, I'm the Principal at Petaluma Junior. And we want to talk a little bit about members and to give you an idea of who's involved in how many. And the program is fairly scripted a little bit, there's an expectation that there's a staff member for about six or seven students in the small group. So you can see that Petaluma High right now has 42 students participating with seven teachers, a counselor, and librarian. And this year, we mirror that, you can see by the 43 students, the six teachers, and one counselor. It is an incredible, it's intense work, and I wouldn't, one thing that I've been able to see is, as I've watched it progress on our campus, is that you're asking students, especially at this level, both high school and junior high, to be actively participating and disrupting and being an upstander, which is difficult, it's challenging, it can be challenging for adults. So the bi-monthly meetings are that support group in their small group and then as a collective group. So it's been, it's been an incredible journey this year, and so I just wanted, we wanted to share a little bit about how many students are currently working the process. To increase that, we would have to increase the number of teachers that were also involved, which for a campus of about 42-ish, 44 staff members, for us, might be a little bit challenging, but definitely doable. So just wanted, we wanted to share that little piece.
So at Petaluma High School, we've been working on this program for a little while. We started it a couple of years ago, and then we weren't able to get funding last year, so this year was starting from scratch in a way, but trying to, I had an active group of students last year who, while we weren't running the program, we were talking about what we'd like to do in the future if we could. And so we tried to brainstorm ideas and take it a little beyond the meetings, the regular meetings, and think of some other activities that we can do that they'd like to see accomplished. So there's certain requirements of the program, for example, you're supposed to present your progress and goals to the faculty, and we just had a group of Safe School Ambassadors present our staff, and also they presented a tool that kind of parallels the work that they're doing, but it's for teachers to use. So, and it's from a group called Teaching tolerance, which is a nonprofit group, and it's about speaking up and different kind of easy, quick things for teachers and staff and other adults on campus so that when they hear or see something, they know how to jump into in a way that kind of parallels what our students are doing so that we're all working together on these things. And so that's the Speak Up at School guide that we presented to the staff. Like Sarah said, we did our action snapshot campaign, and based on a two-week period, they calculate about how many interventions you might be having on your campus a day, just anytime, and it came up to about one intervention a day, which is great. Our students wanted to spread some good cheer at our holiday market before the holidays, before winter break, and so they came up with a candy cane compliments thing where students could, for a dollar, buy a candy cane, and we would deliver a nice message to somebody they wanted to send, and they were really sweet messages of support to friends and all of that, some teachers sent, students sent to each other. We also want to reach out to our ninth graders to make sure that the connection is there between the Petaluma Junior High and Petaluma High School, and all of this takes systems and time and effort to build, it doesn't just happen, so we're trying to actively figure out how to do these things. The Safe School Ambassadors Program gives you a great starting point, and then you can build from there. We want to, our students are really excited about reaching out to the elementary schools and the junior high and reaching out hopefully to principals, this is something I will, if there's any principals out there, I will contact, and they wanted to go back to their elementary schools, see if those schools in the district had any anti-bullying programs or helpful programs that they could be part of, or if they could help build that. Because one thing they noticed is it's really hard in the high school level to do this work, and it would be so nice to create this expectation, this thread that goes through all of our schools, from the elementary school through the junior high up to the high school. And so they want to bring that message to little kids because they babysit and they know little kids and they know how, we see the same behaviors, it's just slightly different when they're younger. So that's something we're working on, and we have a student who's building an SSA website, and the goal is to have it be about cyberbullying, so that students know how to report, like why to report it, how to report it, there's so many different forms of media that they're using, and they need to avail themselves of those resources and to let us know at school when we need to know too, so that we can help them through those issues. And that is something that's been nice, as students know that I'm the program advisor, sometimes they'll come to me and say, someone's sending me these things, I don't know what to do, and we work that out together. They, a student at our school posted some really positive posters in the flyer recently just because she wanted to, and our group was inspired by that, so they want to make a contribution to that too and try and get some positive messages out there in the halls just for people to see and feel good about. And then some kind of bigger, more structural things we want to look at is, I'll start with maybe the most far out one, which is the Challenge Day or some kind of like activity. If we do bring Challenge Days or something like that to the high school again, would be great to have the SSAs provide the support during and after as follow-up, because they have some training in it. Also, with ninth grade orientation, we'd like to find a way to be involved in that, so we lay out these expectations as the students enter our school, and that connection, we're even toying with some kind of a texting helpline that can help funnel people into getting help, and these are all in the idea of kind of figuring it out stages, it's a lot to, for all of us that are involved to try and balance everything, but we did experiment just today actually with our first case of peer mediation, where one of our administrators had some students who were struggling and had personal issues together, and she asked us if we had someone who could help, and one of our counselors sat down with some SSAs, went over some basic peer mediation guidelines, got the girls in, got some of our SSAs in, sat down at the table, the counselor started the meeting, backed off, and the SSAs and the girls talked, and they came up with some agreements and recognized everyone's needs, and it seemed to work out well, and they have something set up for follow-up. So we're hoping that we can build that kind of a system too. So we have a lot of goals and things that we're trying to work on, and hopefully in a year, you know, we have more of this in place and it keeps building.
This is actually Renee and I, so just to reiterate the members of the team, and actually, one of the things that all schools need are great teacher leaders, and if you wouldn't mind, a round of applause for Jenny Linibus, because she really is. Renee and I both believe how critical this is, academics are really important, but none of the academics happen without kids feeling secure and safe in the schools that they reside in. And the work that we do as adults is one thing, but the work that students do for other students is far more important and valuable in terms of turning around academic performance. This is the linchpin of what we want when we talk about test scores and AP scores and go to college, making sure we have excellent citizens in our society and communities. One quick word on sustainability, this year or last year, we didn't have the SSA program at Petaluma High because we didn't have the funding for it. PES did step up and through Community Matters provided funding for us for this year, but the amount of funding that comes though, it doesn't actually come until January, so we sustain it in kind of a way that is hoping that we'll get the grant. So we need to work with the board and with the district about finding ways to make that sustainability occur prior to the year beginning, so that Jennifer and her kids feel secure and Nancy and her kids feel secure about what's going to happen in the following year. So we believe in it, we think it's critical, and we just want the board to know about the funding. So thanks for listening. Sorry, one more slide, which is today's, today's picture. Those are the Petaluma Junior High kids, along with Riley Scott, who was there today, right?
Yeah, it's not the entire Petaluma Junior group, but it's the majority of it, and so there are a few who came tonight, so could our Petaluma Junior High School Safe School Ambassador just please stand up so we can see you? Give them a hand. And I also wanted to recognize Brenda Martin, who's one of our parents of SSA, she's very helpful in getting the training started and all of that. Thank you very much, Brenda.
Questions? Comments? I've got a couple to refer. Please.
I'm just wondering, at the high school level, if you see something going on, do you immediately get involved, or you go see a teacher or a counselor to help you sort of sort out what's going on, or?
It normally varies depending on the situation, so if it's something basic like put-downs, for example, in one of my classes, I've had several different occurrences where someone will call someone else a name and I will directly address it and say, hey, let's not do that, let's not call that person a name because that's not okay. So it just depends on the particular situation, but more often than not, it's good to just do direct, take care of it, so.
And your peers generally are receptive to that kind of?
For those persons that I have personally, they've been accepting of it and they understand that I'm receptive, yeah.
And then once you're identified in the program as a student, ambassador, are you in it for two or three years, or is it a one-year cycle?
We'd like to, the way it works is they go to their first training at whatever year they're recruited in, and then the following, they're hopefully get to train a new batch of people, and then they would be welcomed back to kind of the tail end of the two-day training, so that they usually improve, they get a little refresher, get to work together. So the idea is that it should be building and growing in numbers, and there's a natural drop-off to, as, you know, kids get in the program, that maybe it's not something they're comfortable with, because your question does get to a point, which is, it is hard to stand up to your peers in certain circumstances, and so sometimes part of it is just watching and observing and maybe following up privately with someone to support them, but we have to kind of win to see that, and that's kind of a life long, so, yeah.
I love the fact that you're reaching to the junior high and then even maybe farther to the elementary schools, and looking right at Hadley, she knows how I've learned how little kids love big kids, and so all it takes is someone setting a good example for you and then being there for you. And then of course, once you get to ninth grade, seeing that junior or senior that you know from the program earlier, I think it's, it's a great way to help sustain it.
And I'd like to say that the ninth grade orientation is an excellent time to try to catch those who may not have been aware of it in junior high, because we know junior high kids aren't always aware. Sorry. They're wonderful, thank you for doing it, but that some people aren't necessarily, you know, paying attention, and so catching every ninth grader coming in today would be welcome to that, say, Ms. Hawkins.
Just a couple of questions. What kind of funding are we talking about, David, and what is it specifically used to pay, to, excuse my?
Regarding the funding goes to training, as Jenny alluded to, the training in October. So at that time, the seven to ten teachers plus 45, 50 kids, and then Petaluma Junior is the same kind of model, and that trains around four to five thousand dollars, and it's very good. I've sat through it twice and it's.
Do we do that ourselves, or does somebody come in and do that?
No, we, someone comes in from the outside. We've used a net, and I'm not sure if it's another one, but she's fabulous and she connects with kids, kids walk out of there, yes, SSA kids, they walk out and they're going, wow, that's kind of a life-changing two days for me, I really feel like I, not only do I have the tools to do this, but now I feel like I must, I really feel like I've been given a kind of a gift. That's part of it, there's also this, there's little things like sub-costs for teachers, so you pull them out for two days, it's about for 10, 12, 20 teachers, so it adds up. We're not talking about a great deal of money, we're talking about 10 to 15,000 dollars a year to sustain it. And again, Community Matters and PES have stepped up, we're just looking for a funding stream to ensure that we know it's there, and I think PES can be that support, so it's sort of like, it's like leveraging anything, if the money is there to begin with and then we have infill, something in on the backside, we'll be fine.
But that some people aren't necessarily, you know, paying attention, and so catching every ninth grader coming in today would be welcome and safe, as far as.
Just a couple of questions. What kind of funding are we talking about, David, and what is it specifically used to pay, to use my?
Regarding the funding goes to train, as Jenny alluded to, the training in October. So at that time, the seven to ten teachers plus forty-five, fifty kids, and then Petaluma Junior, the same kind of model. And that trains around four to five thousand dollars, and it's very good. I've sat through it twice and it's.
Do we do that ourselves, or does somebody come in and do that?
No, we, someone comes in from the outside. We've used a net, and I'm not sure if it's another one, but she's fabulous and she connects with kids. Kids walk out of there, yes, SSA kids, they walk out and they're going, "Wow." That's kind of a life-changing two days for me. I really feel like I, not only do I have the tools to do this, but now I feel like I must. I really feel like I've been given a kind of a gift. That's part of it, there's also this, there's little things like sub-costs for teachers. So you pull them out for two days, it's about for ten, twelve, twenty teachers. So it adds up. We're not talking about a great deal of money, we're talking about ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year to sustain it. And again, Community Matters and PES have stepped up, we're just looking for a funding stream to ensure that we know it's there. And I think PES can be done so. So it's sort of like leveraging anything. If the money is there to begin with, and then we have infill, something in on the backside, we'll be fine. We just have to know that we can do this and be sure.
And it kind of goes back to the conversation we've had and shown so many times about the way that schools are funded and uncertainty from year to year. And so I can imagine that if that's the case, you don't know that next year you're going to have the funding, and you train and then you have to retrain or find new people to train because people are falling apart, people don't have that, so. Okay, and then I guess just a comment to close unless somebody else says anything to their friends. I think what you all do is incredibly great. And I think especially for the junior high kids, I just think that's incredibly great for your age and your, I mean, obviously you're very mature. I think back to the dark ages when I was at Petaluma Junior High School and Petaluma High School, and I can't even conceive of how helpful that would have been for a lot of folks that we went to school with. And to David's point, which I think is a great point, that safe isn't just physically safe, safe is emotionally safe, and safe is feeling that you're connected and that you're not going to be bullied or put down. And so thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
All right, we are going to move to comments from the public. Am I taking? Oh yeah, if anybody needs to go to, if anybody needs to study, this is the first thing you should be doing tonight, you should do that. If anybody wants to go to a basketball game, there's one going on across the country, and you should do that secondarily after you finish the homework. If it's okay with you. So thirty seconds.
Accuse me again.
All right, everybody upgrading their seats, shopping around, getting the best view. All right, so just again, I'm a little bit away, so I fought that. Just again, with regard to public comment, we have public comment on an agenda item, we do it at the agenda item time. Now we have to point the agenda, which is comments from the public, which are not on the agenda. So these are things that we're not going to be talking about later when you would have the opportunity to make a public comment. I think I only have one public comment card unless, I assume, Mr., I'm sorry, Wach, Wachol Volzki?
Wachol's name.
Excuse me. I assume this is going to be under the, part of the agenda regarding bond?
That is correct.
Okay, so then we'll save you total. So I believe I have one, unless I have any other cards for that. And remember again, if you have public comment, you're going to fill out the cards for the agenda items to start. And I'm going to read this only because, Mr. McGavin, you know this by heart, I'm sorry, because you've spoken here many times. But for those, I'm going to read this, this little sort of disclaimer piece now, just because I have it in front of me, all right? So bear with, because I'm going to cite some government codes. Under Government Code, Section 54954 dot three, "A, Members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district." By the words, "We'd love to hear you talk about stuff that has to do with schools, but if we're talking about global climate change and it doesn't relate directly to how we're making it worse, then you get where I'm going on that." So stuff that we control, that we can actually influence. In the course of Board Policy, BP 9323, speakers allocated a total of five minutes to address the board for a maximum of twenty minutes on each subject matter. While the government referenced government code allows speakers to criticize district policies, procedures, programs, services, employees, and specifically us, the district does not have, it does have current policy specific to complaints against employees. All right, so we handle this a little differently, and we have to handle this a little differently just because of confidentiality, state law, and union rules. Should come, comments for the public pertaining to a specific district employee, the board is supposed to control first, be submitted a writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. Board does not take action or discuss items not appearing on the agenda, but the board does value public comment, signal issues to convey that although board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, we just carefully appreciate your value from the public, and we do. And that being said, I have one public comment card, and this is Mr. McGavin. And you have a talking for us, a video presentation? No? Okay. So this is, well, you can talk some more.
Thank you very much. I've been here many times talking about a very important topic that has not been treated seriously by the school board. So I will start. Petaluma City Schools, quote, "Intentional ignorance, illegal acts, and neglect," is the title of a guest commentary that will appear in the Argus Courier on Thursday. Tonight, I'll read an email that I sent last Saturday to school board members, to the superintendents, to all the school principals, and to the editor of the Argus Courier. I received no responses to this email, which is customary, since I've sent them over fifty-plus emails and haven't received a single response from nearly every member. In the email, I included a link to an article from the Fullerton Informer dot com about a major league baseball and tennis players that are facing early deaths from brain tumors, most likely due to radar exposure on field and on the courts. Radar is radio frequency, electromagnetic fields, RF, EMF, and is very much microwave radiation, just like Wi-Fi. I also included a link to a video presentation by Dr. Lee Salford, and his research demonstrates how radio frequency, electromagnetic fields, microwave radiation causes our blood-brain barriers to leak and damages our brains. If you skip to twelve forty-five in the video, one will see the specific exposure levels that is most effective at opening the blood-brain barrier. It's not a high level, it's a very low level. And that, you go right to that part of the video, and it will show you, it is the same level that was measured in Petaluma City School classrooms in August of two thousand thirteen. All of this information was shared with the board in September of two thousand thirteen, and they have done nothing effective to help. I have one statement before I start the email. The neglect, irresponsibility, and mistakes you have all made over the last nine months, and there are many documented mistakes, have now convinced others to take legal action to protect our children. How can each of you allow your actions to continue to be against the health and safety of children? It's crazy. Now for the email. As a few of the school board members are involved in Petaluma Little League, perhaps they'll be motivated to read about Major League captured Gary Carter's early death from a brain tumor caused by radar. Perhaps they will also finally seriously consider if they want to risk this fate for the students, the safety of whom they are legally bound to protect. A little bit of convenience that you get from a wireless network is absolutely trivial compared to the damage the wireless signals may cause to the students' brains. They're in the business of developing students' brains. Why are educators so hard to understand this point? Why are they so willing to risk damaging our students' brains, and for what gain? A little bit of convenience, that's it. All of our educational goals, every one of them, BYOD, one-to-one, all that stuff, can be done with a wired network, which offers higher bandwidth, greater security, and actual safety, not guesswork, something we can all agree is safe. We're all exposed to toxins in the environment, it enters our bloodstream, all right? Wireless signals overwhelm our blood-brain barriers, it's been proven in science since nineteen sixty. But wireless signals allow these toxins to move more blood into our brains, and that causes all kinds of illnesses, brain cancer being just one of them. Our bodies are designed to filter out these toxins, but those wireless signals get in the way of the very low-power electrical gate that is supposed to protect us, and it mixes up those two fluids. And when I say low power, I mean a peak a watt, that is point zero, 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 one watt. And if you compare that low amount, which is where our brains work, to what the federal government allows to happen, is ten watts through the air at six million miles an hour. Simply stated, ten watts overwhelms a peak a watt. So it's no surprise that any living organism continuously exposed to such high levels of RF, EMF, microwave radiation will show serious effects. What should we do? We should manage it, we should allow teachers to turn it on when they need it, turn it off when they don't. One final question, how will the Petaluma City School District be able to convince voters that they can spend nearly ninety million dollars in school bonds wisely and responsibly? The district is tied up in litigation about their inability to spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars wisely and responsibly. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, no more public comment? See nobody from public comment? We'll close out and move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, motion that we approve the consent agenda? All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Consent agenda passes, so let's start burning through the non-consent. And as I've said for the last five board meetings, we've just started doing these on the iPad, I've got really thick fingers and I'm sort of struggling a little bit, so work with me as I work my way through the agenda. So let's go to, we're in human resources, let's go to item three, which is Resolution thirteen fourteen twelve. The recommended motion is the board approved Resolution thirteen fourteen twelve, authorizing the release of temporary certificated employees. I'll take a motion.
Second.
Who's going to speak to that? Ron, is that you?
Yes. I actually come to you annually with this. It's our temporary employees that, that we release every year. They know in advance, although not all, you know, obviously not pleased with that. But we really don't know what our staffing needs are going to be, as we, as you know, but we've just got the, the contract openers, and so we've negotiated, we really don't know what class size the staffing needs are going to be. We're not really sure who might even be deciding to retire or step back on their workload next year. So because of all those things, just to be fiscally.
Brutal?
Yes, prudent, that would be the thing. And next to the second one, there's, there's two very related. One is, we're teachers who haven't been here seventy-five percent of the year, the other is for teachers who will be here seventy-five percent of the year, so they will all get released, and we don't know yet how many we'll be able to bring back.
So is it fair to say that this is the annual dance that we do with regard to trying to balance out how much money we might have versus how much money we got compared with how much instruction needs?
Yes, yes, and we're hopeful this year to, to hire, hire teachers and bring back.
We have to notice these folks, and?
Yes, yes.
Seems like the store feels better than even a chance of actually bringing a lot of them back, is that correct?
Yes, yes, there's, there's a fair chance that, you know, some of them will come back and many of them will come back.
It's one of the very good things, I definitely believe that.
Yes, yes. Principals will all meet with them and actually have and kind of warn them, reminded them that it's going to happen, but then also will meet with them individually over the next couple of days to, to, more gently than the letter states, let them know.
Any questions about that? All those in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Number four oh, four oh and one. And I won't make you get back up for Resolution four, which is, Ryan four, which is Resolution thirteen fourteen thirteen, which is the release of temporary certificated employees who serve more than seventy-five percent of the school year. The recommended motion is that the board approve Resolution thirteen fourteen dash thirteen, authorizing the release of temporary certificated employees.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Any further questions, even though I dismissed Ron already? They can get back up just for fun?
I'm more than happy to do that, I've been getting back up in just a moment.
So I don't have any questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so let's go on to item five, blockbuster resolution thirteen fourteen fourteen, week of the school administrator. Little did I know when I woke out of bed Monday morning. The week of, oh, it's not yet, excuse me, it's coming, so we're not still. Recommended motion, the board approved Resolution thirteen fourteen dash fourteen, clearing the week of March third through March seventh, two thousand fourteen, is the week of the school administrator.
Second.
Any comment on that? Ron, would you please?
I would love to, but.
We've been doing this a long time, Ron, I want you to feel comfortable getting up and down.
Yes, 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 you know, it's, I sit towards the front, you know, it's all I guess for walking a little bit. No, it's, the week of the school administrator, just really to celebrate the outstanding work and just energy and intelligence and commitment that our administrators bring to our schools to really do everything they can to, to work with the rest of the school staff to increase, increase student achievement. And we do appreciate everything that they do, and like to honor them for at least a week for that.
I'd like to say that I don't think most students and parents really understand what school administrators really have to do, especially at the junior high and high school levels. I mean, obviously at the elementary levels, I think parents have an idea because they see them, they're more connected. But the rounds of sporting events and other extracurricular activities, plays, et cetera, that they attend, in addition to the workload of balancing the academics and the staff needs and the students' needs, it's, it's amazing that people volunteer to do these jobs, because it's really.
Well, they aren't completely volunteered.
There's something on the agenda later on.
But yes, and I, I tell you, I've been, I've been in this district a number of years, and I appreciated so many of our administrators, but the team that we have now is just amazing, just outstanding. Actually, I think I saw almost all of them today in one place or another, and just admiring what they do and they bring to us.
What do we have planned?
On Thursday, the, what is it, the sixth?
The sixth, we're having a party.
You're invited to pub or repub, I guess, but that'll be after hours. Which after hours, some of them might be nine or ten o'clock, but I think they'll make it an early, so anyhow, I just, those of you who are here.
I just have one comment for everybody else. You know, I always kind of measure jobs by ones that I would do and ones that I would not do. I would not do your job. And having, I always thought that, and having been involved here seven years or eight years or whatever, you know, with me, I've solidified that I would not do your job. To Mary's point, it is, I think, one of the most, I'm always reminded, I'm sorry, I'm going to just take a little leeway here. I always remember this, I was, I was just out of college and I was working for a bank, and I had to go down to Southern California, and I sat next to the board president of the Orange District, whatever, it was huge, huge district, and so I'm always starting to talk to him, and I made this stupid, at the time, comment, and I've always regretted that I said this, and said, "I just can't believe you pay those guys that much." I can't believe, and come to find out, first of all, it's not all that much, but second of all, what you have to do for what it is, and what you put up with, and the challenges that you have, and the responsibilities that you have for what you do, is actually incredible. And I would challenge any parent that's out here or out there watching to walk a week in the shoes of any school administrator, and you will realize that those shoes hurt. And they're not flashy, and you, you, the phone rings a lot, and Friday night I was at a basketball game in the basketball pool, and Mr. Stewart was there, and Mr. Holly was there, instead of being at home with their kids, they were making sure that everybody got home, got up there okay, and got back okay, and it happens all the time. Steve runs the largest business in Petaluma, and I always say this, and when I say the numbers, people kind of are surprised, we have almost a thousand employees, we're responsible for seventy-five hundred students, there are, I think, nineteen properties that this district owns and operates, and it's the largest landhold in Petaluma. This is by far the biggest business in Petaluma. And the idea that they're doing it on a shoestring budget, and that's a fact, and I'm a banker and I can tell you, that's a fact, they're doing it on a shoestring budget, is pretty incredible. So I may lie about this, but I'd adjust because these folks are here, I hope, you know, I'm pretty sure, and I know Steve does, that we really respect you and we appreciate your work. So thank you. While I was saying that, I should have been also trying to find my next item on the page. All right, we're going to go to Business Services, item number four, purchase orders. We have a list of purchase orders. We have a list of purchase orders that need to be accepted in accordance with board policy, so I'll take a resolution.
Okay.
And we don't have any, anybody needing to abstain because of, okay. So all those in favors?
Aye.
Aye. Post. List of expenditures, same deal. We have a list of expenditures that are over a certain dollar amount to come to the board for us to review, so we'll make sure that we're not spending money that we shouldn't be spending. Everyone has had a chance to review those?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. That's 4-0 on one as well. This is an interesting one. Ratification, agreement of ratification. Casa Grande High School Native Plant Nursery Cooperative Agreement for Environmental Education and Native Plant Propagation. And I think that you made that complicated for me to say on purpose. So the recommended motion is board ratification. Do I have a second? We need some discussion.
Yes. Yeah, so for a number of years, we've had a nursery on the Casa Grande campus where they grow native plants that are used by the water agency along creeks and the like. It's a teacher with a number of students who assist him, providing the services and we made an agreement with the water agency for a multi-year agreement, so it's coming back for renewal at this time.
I wanted to ask Jane about the educational, if you could share with us.
Instructionally, this is one of those great agreements that we love to have because the kids get real hands-on experience in the, not only the propagation, but then also the planting of the plants along the streams and that kind of thing. So it's an environmental education, true environmental education experience for those students and can lead to career opportunities for them later on. So this is one of those things that we're talking about with Common Core where they learn the science of the plant and they learn the science of the streams and all of that, but then they're also getting out there and getting real hands-on experience in keeping those streams and maintaining those streams in a positive environment. So it's perfect for us.
Is it run as a class or it's a club or after-school program?
It's, this is ran as an after-school program through one of the houses and with one of the instructors at Casa Grande.
And how many kids participate?
Around, between 20 and 30 usually.
Any questions? All those in favor of ratifying this?
Aye.
Aye. Post. All right, to the big ticket item. Thank you for your patience. And actually, this is a good question, Steve. Since we're talking about elementary and we're talking about high school, for the purposes of live discussion or their comments, we want to see that in elementary or high school?
Yeah, they're charted under the elementary district.
Okay, very good. So that's good for you, because that's what we're doing there. All right. So item number seven, Resolution 20132014-15. Board of Education, Petaluma City Elementary School District, County of Sonoma, State of California, ordering an election to authorize the issuance of school general obligation bonds, establishing specifications of the election order and requesting consolidation of other elections occurring on June 3rd, 2014. I'm going to need a motion for that.
Oh, sir. Usually tipping ahead of you.
So we have a second on that. So let's go with, this is the way this works, by the way, just logistically. So we'll have discussion up here in the form of a presentation, then we will open it up to public comment and then there'll be discussion amongst the board members and then we'll vote. All right? So this is your opportunity to speak. And I want to say this in the most polite manner possible, but we've all seen that movie where the guy stands up in the back row with the cowboy hat and says something like really prophetic in the middle of a discussion. We don't do that. So there's a time and we want to hear it, but we run this meeting in order. Does that make sense? Did I say that in a polite way? I hope I meant to. Please, I hope you accept it. So we've got a motion and a second. Let's hear some discussion.
So at the last meeting, I shared with you the items that are proposed in the $20 million general obligation bond for the elementary district. The resolution this evening is to place this measure before the voters on the June 3rd ballot. In looking at the cost of a $20 million general obligation bond, we will be increasing the property taxes by approximately $20 per $100,000 of assessed valuation. So with that, a $400,000 home would see an $80 a year increase in their property taxes to help pay off over time. And in this case, we're looking at 25-year bonds. We could have the amount be lesser per year for a 30-year bond, but it'd be more overall. So we're not looking to go with a 30-year bond, which in a current interest bond for school district, many districts do that.
You're saying that the annual obligation would be less, but the total obligation would end up being more?
If we went with a 30-year bond, correct. So we think this is the most effective way for taxpayers. Going back to the 1991 was the last time district, when that was a $30 million general obligation bond for the elementary district at that time. We spent those dollars over virtually 20 years. Our plan at this time is to spend these dollars over the next 10 years approximately and not as, over the extended period of time that we did with the 1991 authorization. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Like I said, at the last meeting, we went over the list of proposed projects of the boards, very well aware of what's planned for these dollars. And we did look at many opportunities. We could have had basically a maintenance of cost where we would not be increasing the taxpayers' rates, that we would do a bond anticipation note early on and then pay it off with later bond. But with that, the cost would go up to closer to $30 per parcel. And our proposal is less expensive for the taxpayers, property owners of our elementary district. As we well know, the city of Petaluma has been very supportive of our districts and our polling indicated that the support for this measure was about 65% when we reviewed it last month. Be happy to answer any questions that I know you have other people want to speak to.
Sure. So just talk real briefly though about the project list.
Okay.
And how that works, just so everybody's clear about how that works with what's on it, what's not on it, when things could potentially be done, when they wouldn't be done, how they'd be done.
Okay.
If I can get more broad than that, just let me know.
That's fine, I can address that. So you're going to be talking about the high school bond. I'm going to go over the elements that are common to both the elementary and the high school bond. So as we talked at the last meeting, we're looking at providing every classroom with a tech package. The board approved the tech plan last spring and this is what we believe is necessary in every classroom, but significant component of that is unfunded. It would not happen during the term of the tech plan because we don't have the available resources. So we'd be looking at resources to support that. We would have the phase two of the plan to increase the bandwidth in every school campus and this would provide for the opportunity to have one-on-one devices. We've talked about now that the state's starting to increase revenues after several years of decline over the Great Recession and the years following. We haven't purchased textbooks, you know, the state has a seven-year textbook cycle, but they stopped the cycle for seven years because of the recession, allowed us to spend those dollars just to meet our general education needs. And so our desire would be bringing us into the 21st century and not buying textbooks, but having one-on-one devices where students would be able to have textbooks and the opportunity to use other resources available on the net. As part of that, we're also looking to provide one-on-one devices so that every student, because one of the things we know is we have a smarter balance test and the smarter balance test is going to be taken on a computer. Kids have to be very familiar and that has to be the tool that they use. That's also the tool that most of the jobs that they will be doing when they leave our district will require as well. So part of it is to provide a computer, tablet, or a device. Right now, we're looking at Chromebooks for our students currently, but that device could change as we move forward. But having one-on-one devices that during the 10 years, we would refresh twice, we would expect devices to last approximately four years. So you would buy one the first year, fourth or fifth year, you'd buy new devices and then before the end of the 10 years, you would refresh that again. So that's incorporated into the proposal for both elementary and secondary districts. The other thing that we have, we have classroom furniture that's in many cases 30, 30-plus years old. It's not conducive to modern education, it's not conducive to the courses that we reviewed at the last, last meeting.
I think any parent that spends a parent night, they'll tell you that.
They probably have their names in the back of their shirts when they attended our schools.
Not only that, but they seem to have got smaller over here.
Yes. So, and the reason is, I mean, in California, we have very scarce educational resources. We're in the bottom quartile and near the lowest funded per student basis in the nation. And so we don't spend our scarce resources on furniture. This would allow us to basically provide an educational environment that is conducive to the Common Core and the plans for the district. We also, on both elementary and secondary campuses, we do modernization, you know, floor, ceiling, walls, lighting, wiring, plumbing, fire alarms, communication systems, PNVAC systems, et cetera, same as we did with the last ones. But the desire was that the state would also have a bond initiative. There's not, they're currently spending down and almost out of state bonds, but we'd be matching state bonds with district bonds. And the only way you can get those, the state funds, is to have a local bond that you can use the resources from to match the state funding. And so as I shared at the last meeting, the $30 million in the elementary district became more than $60 million of projects because of matching and using resources. The high school bond, 45, came over $100 million in projects, mostly through the matching state fund with those resources. And then we're replacing old portables. Some of the portables are over 30 years old, they're not worth trying to restore their useful life, we're well in excess of their useful life, but we continue to patch them up and use them. They're not efficient, they're not effective education spaces, so we'll be looking to replace those. In the elementary district, we'd also have an existing decomposed aggregate tract at Mary Collins School, which is not in good condition, used to replace, and they're failing. So that would be the one specific project, just the elementary district, over and above all the projects that are common to both districts. And I think that's everything on the elementary district and I can address the high school elements.
Does anybody have any specific questions? Steve, right now, actually, you know what, why don't we, let's hear public comment and let's go back. Those comments will spur the questions.
I have some, yeah.
Okay, so, and sure, you have an opportunity to speak at both of this item and the next one. You can combine your comments, however you want to do it, since there's two separate items. You may speak.
Yes, since I can combine them.
It's up to you. I would be happy to accommodate you if you prefer two five minutes or one 10 minutes.
Okay.
So you tell them what you want to do.
At home.
Okay. Well, I'll give you the opportunity to speak. And if you'd introduce yourself, just...
My name is Wyana Bakalowski. I am, I used to be for 25 years Chief Technology Officer and Chief Information Officer of Public Institutions of Higher Education and K-12. So I believe I know what I'm talking about. I commend you for going out for a bond, which I believe is a necessity. There's nothing more important than education. Education is the ultimate goal of everybody, it's our future. So I'm conditionally supportive of the bond, conditionally out of one reason. You include technology in a facilities bond, there's a huge difference between a roof and technology. When I replace a roof, I don't have to think about that roof for another 20 years. Not true with technology. Technology has to be introduced, supported, maintained, and learned. Learned by the teachers who have to learn the devices, who have to learn what to do with them, who have to learn how to include them intelligently in lesson plans. They have to be trained for that. And you, in your bond measure, exclude teacher salary and administrative salary. So in essence, from my point of view, you have two options. You exclude in the facilities bond, the technology portion, and go for a different technology bond, or you include the salaries and the training costs in the bond itself. I do not believe that the people of Petaluma are not intelligent enough to understand that salaries are necessary to maintain additional computers. Because also in the support area, you need the additional salaries. You cannot drop devices on desks and nothing happens and believe that the staff, which before already most probably was overworked, now suddenly can maintain the double or triple amount of devices. One other thing, you talk about a one-to-one initiative. I want to spend a little bit of time about that idea. If you put a device into the hand of every student, and that is the idea of a one-to-one, what you do is you have to buy relatively inexpensive devices, because otherwise you cannot afford it. A socio-economically challenged student has most probably no internet connection at all. You mentioned Chromebooks. Chromebooks only and exclusively work under the condition that you have an internet connection. Otherwise, nothing. Are you willing to pay under these circumstances for these students the internet connectivity? Are you also willing to pay support staff for a 24-by-7 support system? Because ultimately what you allow students is now to learn on a continuous basis, on a 24-by-7 scenario, and therefore they will need a 24-by-7 support. How do you intend to deal with the digital gap, which will invariably occur between these socio-economically challenged students? And better off students who have now much better devices at home will use them and support from their parents and the possibility to buy additional programs, additional support to do the work they're supposed to do on these machines. These are questions which have to be answered, I believe, beforehand and not afterwards. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is actually an agendized item, so we can have a discussion. I would like to address, and I appreciate the issues, but in regards to a Prop 39 bond, you cannot have admin salaries as a part of that minimum. And on the bond side, you can't have the teacher salaries either. On the tech, a tech bond...
Just to clarify, it's against the law.
Yes.
You can't have salaries on a bond.
Without approval, right?
That's a partial text. You can't have admin salaries at all on a Prop 39 bond. That was part of the law approved by the voters in November of 2000. But the general fund is where we're looking to support the salaries and we will have some savings by virtue of, for the general fund, by virtue of the bonds to provide that opportunity for additional technology staffing and training for the use of this. We have experience already with technology and one-to-one devices at our lowest, second to lowest socioeconomic school. Comcast has a program where they get for $9 a month internet connectivity if they qualify for free and reduced meals. So that's already being addressed by... So that's already being addressed by, basically, a service provider in our community that we make available through our schools to them and do the outreach. So, there is Wi-Fi connectivity. Big advantage of a one-to-one is, as opposed to bring your own device, every kid has the same device. We don't have a Cadillac for the, for the families who can afford it, and a Volkswagen for, for the ones who we either providing, or that's what the family can afford. So, at least this proposal balances the playing field in school. We can't control what happens at home, obviously, as to what they walk home and are able to, to use in, in their house. But we do feel, based on our experience at McKinley Elementary School, that Wi-Fi is available for these students at home, and we have a real cross-section of students at the sixth grade academy. Many free and reduced, but not the majority of the class.
So Steve, with regard to the Chromebook, which I'm not familiar with, but if I understood a previous discussion about this, so we would download APK, whatever textbook, it goes onto that Chromebook, that's not going to be able to go onto my son's iPad.
Correct.
It will only work on the district. So, are, are that works?
Are they going to be, are they going to be in the cloud, are they going to be downloaded to the device?
So, that's actually what we're wrestling around with right now. And in addition to Comcast and the, the nine ninety-nine month internet access that we have for free and reduced lunch families, we also have just, you guys approved the contract a couple of weeks ago with AT&amp;T, and with those devices comes something called a MiFi, which is basically a hotspot that's locked down into our network. Those MiFi's, for kids who don't, can't even afford the nine ninety-nine, the MiFi's will go home with those students, so that they will be able to access internet in the cloud and all of that. Right now, we're wrestling around with, that was a question that I had with a, a group of consultants yesterday around textbooks, because with a Chromebook, there is very little storage on the ones that we're using right now. The ones that are now coming out are beginning to have more and more storage, because I am also concerned about students' access to textbooks, continual access to textbooks, and it might be my old-fashioned way of thinking, but I'm thinking that maybe they should be on the device. We can put textbooks on an iPad, we can put them on a Chromebook that has sufficient storage, onboard storage. We can store them in the cloud, other types of laptops and that, of course, have the onboard storage. So, those are the kinds of issues that we're wrestling around with right now, but we are getting clarity through a group of consultants that we're working with.
And the other thing that he addressed was the, the twenty-four by seven. We do, in this information age, learning and access to information is a twenty-four-seven venture. We're not anticipating having twenty-four-seven support for the devices. If something happens over the weekend, yeah, that student will be without until they can get back and, and we can address the system. There will be some opportunity for them to call, you know, if it's, to call, other than the district for support, if it's, if it's a device that has, or a system that has tech support outside of the school district.
Jane, can you, can you get, like, the old USBs and things to store, although I know it's probably not great for students to have ten textbooks on the wall, but can you do that to add?
That is a solution. That is a solution.
So, your textbook is now this tiny thing that you plug in, and now you can view it.
Six textbooks or whatever.
Yeah. You think about what the, the backpacks that the kids are carrying around right now and all of the, the studies about the back, their backs and all of that, so this is one of the solutions to that, that we can put them on a, a USB drive, we might be able to do onboard storage, we might be able to do cloud storage. So, we're learning right now, in anticipation.
Is teacher training allowed under the bond?
Well, teacher training will be within the general, within the general fund.
It's not allowed under the bond?
I don't believe so in regards to salaries. I mean, we're specifically saying that teacher salaries and administrative salaries are not allowed in the bond, and that's per council's.
Because training would be paying them for their.
Correct, correct. That would be, that would be.
But that would be the goal, if their technology paid with the bond.
We would have general fund.
To provide.
General resources to do that, and it could be categorically, the state could provide additional funds for that. Hopefully, they'll continue to have a local control funding formula, provide sufficient resources within the local control funding formula to support the training necessary to have optimum use in the classroom, and that, I mean, that's a challenge for, for the district and, and all districts, as we're looking to bring technology into the hands of students. The teacher has to be able to teach, and I know we're having training where we're providing teachers with Chromebooks for them to become familiar with and, and be able to use once their students have them available to them.
We also had a meeting today with computer-using educators queue, which is the kind of lead organization.
Your acronym is driving crazy.
Hey, I, I define them. They are the lead organization in the state of California and Nevada for training. They are partners with Google and all different kinds of, of media, social media, computer-using people and organizations, and we have a meeting with them today to begin the discussions of how we might expand opportunities for our teachers through their networks.
And just, just to address some of your comments, I, one, I really appreciated them. I wish more people would get involved. Two, it's a huge priority. Right now, I think many of us on the board and the district feel that technology, up until now, has been behind private industry in education, right? And so, some teachers have computers, they've brought the old one from home, they've gotten a PEF grant, you know, it's been this hodgepodge, and now, here we are in this age of, everyone needs to have it, we need to standardize it, we need to know what everybody has, and that's behind the private industry, but that's what's happening with us right now, and we're very aware that to just throw technology at the students or the teachers without training and making sure it's being used appropriately and educationally is, is a huge priority. So, it's something we discuss a lot.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I would also say, I mean, first of all, please come back. Please come back, we would really appreciate it, because.
I thought your name.
Yeah. You should never have filled that. But to Sher's point, we know we need to do it. I mean, we know we need to do it, and.
If I can't be of any assistance, feel free to follow me.
I promise you, we have your name.
I noticed your phone number and email weren't on this, if you'd like to bend that part at the end of the meeting.
But, you know, secondarily, I think you just scratched the surface of issues that we're gonna have. We're gonna have a lot of issues. I mean, I think we all understand, I think you better than probably most of us. Mike Cole's sitting in the back right now, kind of shivering a little bit. He's our technology director, because he understands that there's gonna be just a dramatic learning curve, and Lord Dean sitting right behind you is one of our, well, the main trainer that we have for technology. You know, they're gonna be two of the most important people in district, who assume that they aren't already. So, you know, one way or another, we've got to get the digital age here.
Yes.
But I absolutely value your comments and appreciate it.
He's ahead of question.
Can you pay consultants out of the bond?
Not out of the bond funds. Those expenses will be coming from the general fund. And we have consultant dollars already built into the general fund for training and the like. But, and those aren't, you can build consultants for designing facilities and the like, we'll be paying them out of the bond funds, but consultants for providing training.
No, 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 but I'm talking about designing the program, what we need in the Pedaluma City Schools as far as technology, like, a big consultant, like, someone that comes in and not paying.
The infrastructure and the like, the infrastructure and the like, but not the educational side.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that, but you can't pay consultants.
Yes, yes.
They're funded consult on what kind of programs we need to be bringing to the district, or what the infrastructure should.
It'd be the infrastructure part of it.
What they need at a higher level.
Kind of has to be tied to something you can touch. These bonds are all for maintaining and building facilities.
Partial taxes are for.
Kind of has to be.
For what were you talking about?
You can pay them to consult us to say, we need to get five hundred laptop computers.
And, and we're fortunate, again, in regards to support of the community, that we do have the partial tax, and we do have the technology component, the partial tax can back and fund consultants.
I, I wanted to kind of underscore, for those watching at home, that we're talking about Chromebooks that we're gonna be, you know, buying every four years or what have you, that the bonds are twenty-year bonds, but the bonds that we sell that will be buying those proportions to.
Well, we happen, we're not gonna differentiate that, I mean, checking with, with a couple of different financial advisors, because you pay off portions of the bonds every year, you'll have paid off more than the value of those bonds in four years.
Okay.
More than the value of the short-term.
So, again, we're not refinancing the house to buy card.
Correct.
We're, they're twenty-year bonds, but it's not being, taking twenty years to buy one Chromebook.
Basically, you're gonna be paying off some of the bonds every year, you will have paid off more than the value of the Chromebooks and the one, one devices in the first three years of paying off. The, the real expensive part is building the infrastructure and the like for district, and then when we get into later years, we'll be looking at, you know, modernization of our facilities.
Yeah, so very good. And then I would just finish with one comment regarding this speaker. Techno, I think we all, and Mr. Badley's not here tonight, he'd probably be the loudest proponent of what I'm about to say. I understand that technology can be just this black hole of throwing money down. I mean, and we have had these discussions of length here about, are we going the right direction? So, please understand that there is currently in place a board that is extremely cognizant of that, and, you know, we give that. We've, we've never been the throw money at it to fix it kind of a group of people, and we ask, unfortunately, for Jane and Mr. Cole and Steve, some really hard questions sometimes. So, but now that we have a little bit more help, we're excited about that. I'm not even being. Okay, so now, any other questions regarding that? Then we're gonna move on over to Matt. Matt's good. And you have some folks?
I do.
So, you can have twenty minutes, you can use it however you want, you cannot thank it, and you can't sell it. So you just tell, I'm just gonna, you call a few folks if you want.
I'll interrupt you in the middle of this transition. These are the letters that were sent as PDFs to.
Actually, they have copies of them.
Fantastic. They're already against, so thank you very much. Also, a final picture, plans of a potential school. Thank you, Ivy, in the back. So, if I could just ask Live Oak folks to please stand up so we can all represent it. Thank you for coming. So, Live Oak families, thank you again for all coming, thank you so much.
Every Tuesday.
It's the best show in town.
Free watch.
Well, without further ado, thank you. The first thing I'd like to say, I have a letter that I've been reading a little bit of, but why we're here is we're looking for a home. We're a school, in my paragraph I started off with last time I was here, I said we are an established school, and I went back home and thought, well, that's probably true. We're an established program, but what we don't have is a school site. We've been in transitional housing, for lack of a better word, for the last thirteen years, and we're really looking for a chance to get mature into a site that would allow our program to fully flourish. So, what I'm here for is to state first that Live Oak merits public support to secure this home. And I think that was recognized by this board as you adopted our charter just a couple months back, stating that we are a worthy public institution to serve the students in Petaluma, and I appreciate that, and I feel that we're partners in that. So, Live Oak is requesting three point five million in funding from the proposed school facilities bond to support the acquisition and development of a suitable site for Live Oak Charter. These funds and the property acquired to the use of the funds will be managed in compliance with all applicable state law and directives. The Pedaluma City School Board will provide oversight of the bond funds to ensure that they are used in accordance with the intent of the bond language. The Live Oak Charter School Board, in alignment with all relevant management criteria, will provide budgetary governance of the funds. Live Oak Charter will use the funds to acquire appropriate school site through the purchase of undeveloped or developed real estate. Live Oak will pursue additional state funding, as well as grants from public and private organizations to support the improvements and construction necessary to convert the site to an adequate public school facility. As a result of the use of bond funds, supported through Pedaluma City Schools Board action, Live Oak would recognize Pedaluma City Schools Board as having met Prop 39 obligations for provision of reasonably equivalent facilities of in-district students. In the event that a change to charter law were to occur, I find this incredibly unlikely, but I think it's important to mention that we take this very seriously. Our role as a public institution, and the, and the role that these funds that are gathered from the public, that they stay for the service of the public. So, in the event that there was a change in charter law, and Live Oak Charter would cease to exist as a public entity, and in turn vacate such property, all public equity in the property, not otherwise prescribed by state ed code and charter law, will revert to the Pedaluma City Schools District. This will ensure that any local community, that the local community retains for the public benefit, any original public investment in such property. Through this means, Pedaluma City Schools Board would ensure that its authorized agency, Live Oak Charter School, is able to meet the facilities' needs of both in-district students as well, as well as out-of-district students, as other schools in this district do provide services for, as mandated by California ed code and charter law. In addition, Pedaluma area residents would retain access to a quality public education program for its children. Live Oak requests inclusion in the scope of projects outlined in the school facilities bond under consideration by the Pedaluma City Schools Board. Live Oak's project requires three point five million for the acquisition and development of property suitable for use as a public school facility. As mentioned in our letter from February tenth, twenty fourteen, precedent for the extension of bond funding to charter schools by authorizing districts as well established, both LA Unified with Measure Q for seven billion in two thousand eight, and San Diego Unified with Measure Z for two point eight billion in two thousand twelve, passed bond measures with direct funding to charter schools' facilities projects, including purchases of property for campus construction. I've attached those charter specific texts from the Los Angeles and San Diego bond measures for your review. We look forward to working with Pedaluma City Schools and support the school facilities bond, and the ultimate improvement of our school sites for the benefit of Pedaluma area families, present and future. Such a partnership would serve Pedaluma residents by fulfilling our mandate to serve the community with the best public education opportunities possible. Live Oak is earnest in our commitment and appreciation of the consideration and support of Pedaluma City Schools Board and staff, and we look forward to furthering this relationship as partners in the school facilities bond. So, thank you so much for your time, and my next speaker is Sarah Grassi.
So, good evening, Board and Superintendent, my name is Sarah Grassi, and I'm a resident and homeowner in Pedaluma City School District and a Live Oak parent. This evening, I'm going to read a letter from my mother-in-law, Lynn Woolsey, who's graciously taking care of my children so I can be here tonight, and then make some personal comments. So Lynn's letter is as follows. Dear Board members and superintendents, this is a request that Live Oak Charter School be included in the scope of projects outlined in the school facilities bond under consideration by the Pedaluma City Board, School Board for twenty fourteen. My request is based entirely on the experience my two, two of my grandchildren are having at Live Oak. They are delightful, interesting little boys, grade one and three, and their parents have found a great school to help them grow and learn. It is clear to me that the students, their teachers, and administrators would benefit from inclusion in the school facilities bond. Sincerely, Lynn Woolsey, retired Congresswoman. My personal comments are as follows. My husband, Michael Woolsey, and I moved our family to Petaluma in two thousand and six, in large part so that our two sons would have access to high-quality public education in the Pedaluma City School District. When it came time for our eldest son to enroll in kindergarten, we visited several local elementary schools and felt that Live Oak was definitely the best educational fit for our family. Despite the countless hours that we, Live Oak parents, and other community members have put into improving our current home on the Sonoma Marin Fairgrounds, these facilities are clearly not reasonably equivalent to school facilities enjoyed by the children in our neighborhood who attend other Petaluma City School District schools, as required under Prop 39. We remind you that Live Oak's request for funding is in line with facilities expenditures proposed by other elementary campuses, and although our facilities' needs are much greater, it highly concerns Michael and me that our sons may not benefit from the school facility bond funds, even though we will be responsible for paying for those funds regardless of Live Oak's inclusion. Michael and I are highly committed and active members of the Live Oak and greater Petaluma communities. We recognize the strength of Pedaluma City Schools, including the unique program offered by Live Oak, is a primary reason why Petaluma is a great place to raise children. Establishing a permanent home for Live Oak will only serve to enhance Petaluma and the Petaluma City School District. We realize that a bond measure such as this one is a rare event, and delaying Live Oak's inclusion may mean a decade or more of inadequate funding, and in turn, extended hardship for our children and the other Live Oak students. We therefore strongly urge you to follow the precedent set by San Diego Unified and LA Unified School Districts and include Live Oak in the facilities bond issue. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Cardine Austin, and this is my daughter, sixth grader at Chloe Madden. I am a homeowner in the Petaluma City School District, and I'm a longtime resident of Petaluma with deep roots in the community. When my daughter Chloe was ready for kindergarten, we looked through the options, and we were so thrilled to find Live Oak was our neighborhood school. We walk our bike to school every day, and it, we were so, my husband and I were so happy that Petaluma offers such a wide breadth of educational opportunities, in particular that fit the particular needs of our family and our children. Live Oak is a thriving community, as Matthew said, but what we don't have is adequate school facilities. We have stable school, teacher, student enrollment. We have stable school, teacher, student enrollment. We have very well-educated, happy staff, many of whom are here tonight, and our children are happy and doing well. But what we don't have is a place for them to eat lunch when it's raining. We don't have any sort of place that they all can gather together as a school. We have no place that we don't have to rent outside of our kind of school grounds that our whole school can gather, certainly not with their parents in attendance. We have no place when it's raining for them to play or have any sort of indoor activities. We wanted to join a, or we did join a middle school sports league for similar schools, but we can't offer basketball. We have no indoor facilities to practice without renting it and kind of shuttling our children around. So what we're asking is to be included, you know, to get a roof, to put, you know, to take your words, is we're asking for a permanent roof that we can call our own. So, that's us.
Thank you.
Talia?
Okay.
I think our school really needs the money to have things that most schools already have as a base. A cafeteria or an actual kitchen, a gym so that we don't have to do P in a car-vated room with a grand piano and about 50 violins next to the school office. A building where a school and, where a school can, and all our assemblies can have all our assemblies and plays year by year. And a playground to play on with swings, grass, and monkey bars. I love Live Oak Charter School. It's a place where I feel accepted the way I am, and that it's okay to make mistakes, or else I wouldn't be learning anything. I also believe that a spacious school environment is one of the keys to the best education a child can have. I think that's what my inner child is looking for.
Thank you.
My name is Melinda Varro, and thank you, thank you for listening to us tonight. I'm the, I've been in Petaluma as a music educator for the last 35 years, and I'm the conductor of the Petaluma Women's Chorus. I've also had the opportunity to do music classes at Live Oak Charter. I've known Live Oak Charter students for the last 13 years, and every time I get a call from a Live Oak parent saying, well, you teach my child privately, I know that I'm going to get an engaged musical child. One of the reasons my son is in the second grade at Live Oak is because when I go to the school assemblies, 99% of those kids sing in tune. As a musician, to hear these people, I could turn around right now and have them sing in three-part harmony, just random people in this room. And, and it does my heart good as a musician and as an educator to feel the kind of deep learning that goes on in this school. From a musician's point of view, I know that the kind of brain function that happens in a musician is like no other. I know that education happens when children are musical. And I want to especially thank Matthew for his help with all of this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mayella Woodconnect. This is my son, Haban. He's a fourth grader at Live Oak Charter School. And I'm a public health nurse with Sonoma County. It'll be two years this August that I've been working with Sonoma County, and I'm actually the main public health nurse for Petaluma, for the program that I work for, maternal child's health. And I am now a resident of Petaluma because of Live Oak Charter School. I probably wouldn't be here if it weren't for Live Oak Charter School. And I also received this education, eight years, so I know the benefits of this quality education, and I do believe that every child in the United States should receive this education. That's not the case right now, but I, I'm so thankful that it's here in Petaluma. With this support, I know that the program in the school can grow, and we can continue to share it with children from more diverse backgrounds. A large percentage of the families I work with work for the agricultural sector, which is a vital part of the local economy. There are wonderful families all over Petaluma and children that deserve this education. And I'm here, and I hope I can participate in sharing this with, sharing this education with, with more children in Petaluma. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leah Brusio. I'm a third-generation public school teacher. I was a public school student in elementary school through high school myself, and I've taught in elementary school, in public elementary schools for my entire 20-year career. The last eight of them, I've been fortunate to be at Live Oak. I'm also a mom of a seventh grader and a third grader at Live Oak, which is hard to believe, and I have a lot of students here. I really could sing for you, but we won't make them do that. And, you know, I'm not just in a public, this public school setting for the SDRS benefits, believe it or not, but it's because I have a real commitment to teaching in my community. And when I first discovered Waldorf, I didn't think my children would ever benefit from that education, because I needed their education to be public. And I never wanted them to be at a school where I was not willing to teach, and therefore I also didn't want to teach in a school where I didn't want to enroll my own children. So I was really fortunate to find Live Oak. And one of my dreams for Live Oak is not, is that we really are able to serve even more of the Petaluma community that we have around us, that we really diversify, because my background is in bilingual and ESL education. So that's where I would like to see, I would like to see us bring Waldorf education to more of Petaluma students, so we already do. Now, I want to talk about the facilities from my viewpoint as a teacher. We have either too much heat or no heat. I currently have no cool air in my fifth-grade classroom, and a lot of our classrooms don't even have windows that open. And I really love children, but I don't like the smell of 32 sweaty children after recess. We don't have sinks in most of our classrooms. We don't have a teacher's room. We don't have a cafeteria, which you've heard about. We're in the process right now of preparing for our fifth-grade play, and we're having to stage it at Lucchese Center, which is walkable field trip for us, just barely, but our first dress rehearsal is set for Friday, which is right in the middle of the second storm. So we're going to be pretty wet as we're practicing. Luckily, our play has a flood in it. Now, you probably know how much using a bathroom is an issue for anybody who works at a school, but it's even more of an issue for us, because we have to share our bathroom with young students, which is delightful to use the bathroom and have a first grader knocking at the door. Or we could spend our short little 10-minute recess break going to check out a key, because the fairgrounds won't let us have a key to their bathroom, and go and use a non-heated fairgrounds bathroom that is open, does have windows that open, but they open right onto the playground, see if balls coming in. And so in the 20 years of teaching, this is truly the least tenable situation I've been in. So we really are a thriving school, as you've heard, and, and we really meet the needs of Petaluma's family in unique ways, from arts, music, movement, and we do have a very rich social curriculum. And I think that we deserve a school site that matches who we've become, and to really ask that you include us in the allocation of funds. By the way, we have leftover furniture from Petaluma City.
This is our final statement. Thank you. You've got time? Great.
We try. We know that you guys are busy.
Yeah. This is important.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to come talk to you this evening. My name is Debbie Elam, and I have a lot of hats. I am a parent at Live Oak. I'm a property owner in your district. I am one of your teachers. I teach mathematics at Castle Grandly High School. I recently took on the leadership role of the fundraising organization at Live Oak. And what I know is that craft fairs and bake sales are not going to buy us an auditorium or a gymnasium or a library. And I know that, as a third-generation educator as well, that the diversity of voices as we go through this transition into adopting common course standards and integrating all of these new, fun, exciting practices in our classrooms, the diversity of voices that happen in our community conversation around education is extraordinarily important. And Live Oak can be a very much vital member in that conversation. I have begun some of my Waldorf training as a teacher. I've used those practices in my own classroom, and I know that Live Oak wants to be an asset to the other educators in this community. And one of the best ways we can do that is by example. And we need the facilities to be able to bring in teachers, show them what we're doing, share ideas. And I know as a teacher, the best thing that I ever learned was by observing other teachers. So in order for us to be part of a voice, part of this community of Petaluma educators, is for us to have these basic facilities. We need an auditorium. We need a space to have our assemblies. And while I totally love that the bootstrap mentality that these people in this room have demonstrated, we have no real grounds to have kickball games. So guess what? We decided we're going to teach our kids how to unicycle. And some of you visited our school, and you saw all those unicycles, and that is a great thing. It develops creativity and so on. But I think we're ready to take it to the next step, and we're ready to play ball. So I urge you to consider our inclusion on this bond. Thank you very much.
That's all. Thank you very much. It's okay. I think, I trust your judgment. Thank you.
All right. Questions?
They've probably directed at Matthew, I guess. The 3.5 million?
Yeah.
How did you come up with that number?
Sure. So I am currently sitting on the board of Sebastopol Charter School in Sebastopol, and they're in the process of acquiring property as we speak. Matter of fact, they just closed escrow about a month ago. So I'm involved in that facility's purchase and acquisition process for them. They purchased their property for about $2.45 million, as I said about a month ago. It's a 20-acre parcel on the outside of town in Sebastopol. They're in the process of developing that. That also requires many fees, sometimes with the county or local agency, as well as development costs of the project manager and architect. So 3.5 million, we believe, would be enough to get us through the door into the property, get us to our development costs taken care of, as well as early planning and architectural design. And then after that, we're looking at, much like Mr. Volker mentioned earlier, matching funds from the state, other grants, other private agencies that will be able to support us in doing the actual build-out process. So 3.5 million is about. That first half, Sebastopol Charter total budget is around $7.2 million for the construction of our facility. We're looking for about half of that. And I know that we talked earlier about in-district students. We have about 40%, 39% of our students. So we're a little bit above that, but we're looking at the lifetime of expenditure and cost from this bond to service the Petaluma community, I believe, is well in line with that proportion.
And have you looked at any potential sites in Petaluma?
We have not, really because it's, without money, it's, it'd be a lot of work wasted.
We will, though, if you...
Do you want to comment on Prop 39? Give me, give us a walkthrough of responsibilities.
The district responsibility under Prop 39 is to provide life facilities for those students who reside within the school district. So it doesn't all have to come from Petaluma City Schools. They could actually make a request to, say, Old Adobe, since that's the other elementary district, for the students in their community, as well, and I'm not sure what percentage of the students reside in Old Adobe, but they could, if they had more than 40 students from any single school district, they're entitled to resources comparable to what is provided for those 40 students from that district. And so in our district, it's someplace probably between 800 and 100, where K6 students who attend their school reside within our K6 district, the elementary district. The 3.5 million that they're requesting is in excess for, of any school that we have on our list. And we have seven elementary schools, seven facilities owned by the elementary district that we're proposing to be addressed with these dollars. It comes out to be about $80,000, or excuse me, $8,000 per student. It's at $20 million in our elementary district. And so when you're looking at, at that, you know, 800,000 would be a comparable share of this particular bond, and probably a little less when you add their students on. It's no longer $8,000 per. That would be accounting for 100 students from Live Oak Charter.
I'm sorry, how many do you have in Live Oak Charter?
Say again.
How many students do you have in Live Oak Charter right now?
Total, 269, about 100 students from Petaluma City Schools.
Right, right, okay.
Give us an idea of the locations of the other 160, though.
A good portion do come from Old Adobe. I don't know the exact percentages, I'm not going to quote them because I'd be wrong, but a good portion does come from Old Adobe, certainly the surrounding districts, the many of the districts that you serve, your high school district, many of those same folks are the ones that are coming to us as well. We also have a good deal that come from the Tidermore Park School District, as well as Nevada, and a few from Center of Bell as well. There's also folks from West County, West Burn that come to us. So it's pretty broad.
So the predominant number, the 100, is the largest subgroup?
Absolutely the largest subgroup.
Okay, Adobe might be half of that.
Maybe.
Yeah. Old Adobe passed two years ago a $26 million bond for their smaller elementary school district. And we've been reading the articles in the paper about the improvements to their campuses that they've been able to accomplish with those funds. When you look at our proposed project list in elementary district, we have projects that are 19.6 roughly, excuse me, 19.3...
368.
Yeah, 368 is actually, if you're looking at the list, that would be accounted for. The $20 million, those dollars would be available for escalation and cost, and those things not accounted for in our, in our estimates. Where, because our high school district is so much larger, and we're bumping up a more significant amount, and we have more needs, in that district, we're asking for, and we'll get into that in the next session, we're asking for, you know, $29 per part, per $100,000 assessed valuation, to help us meet our secondary needs. I mean, in the first bonds, in 1992, when the elementary, or high school district passed their bonds, it was only $45 million. Again, two and a half times the number of students in our elementary district, and there are 30 and 45, so really the high school district didn't go out as aggressively as we're proposing to this time under Prop 39. The resolution, or the ballot, as we proposed it this evening, does not include Live Oak Charter in the language that would be necessary to incorporate them as part of the consideration?
At all. So we pass it, we pass it tonight, then they're out.
I would say unless you revise it this evening, because you could revise the resolution before you.
I had a question for, for, I'm concerned about the, the gap between 3.5 and the 7 million that you would ideally have. Is there any way to envision a certain amount that would get you a school site and the land that you need within the 3.5 million? Or at least the ability to house students, whether you have a cafeteria or a gym or whatever, that you're not, that you have proper bathrooms and whatnot? Is that even feasible? I'm just really curious.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Okay, to be fair. Because we're starting at zero, and since we don't have anything at this point, any investment that you give us is going to help us towards that goal. And I, you know, we don't, we don't have a static facility that's already exists, so Cherry Valley or Grant, they probably have a facility, but if you run the market with it, it's probably worth about $6 million, maybe $7, $8, depending upon when last time we watched your upgrades. Pinecrest, for example, it's Sebastopol School District, recently was shuttered, they then reopened it, leased it to Twenty Hill School District, but instead their dependent charter center is there. But at the time, a couple of years back, they were engaged in negotiations with Sebastopol Charter and the price.
I remember that.
And the cost was around $6, I'm talking about $6 million was what was being come around. So I don't know what your facilities are actually worth, but for ourselves, we're looking for bare land or land spent, and if it can be converted, I'm not really sure. But I would say that looking at what Sebastopol Charter's experience has been, for bare land, a good portion of acreage, we're probably looking at about six acres minimum to about 10 acres for a school site, and certainly 20 and 21, but six to 10 is, I think, minimally, which can do with a campus and then a couple fields adjacent. I don't know what the cost would be in the market, because honestly, there's not many parcels available in Petaluma that have that kind of, that's not the criteria they have.
I can't come up with one, and I can't come up with one in one month.
Well, that's, that's a good question. So the question is, can you repurpose another existing site? Do you have to compromise into five acres? I mean, there's a lot of questions there, but we can't even begin to ask those questions until we choose as a community to make that investment. And that's, I know it is a difficult decision to make, particularly when you're looking at the costs that this may incur on the tax base. I understand that. But we're looking at about $3.5 million, and I know that's perhaps more than what a school has seen. And that's, I know it is a difficult decision to make, particularly when you're looking at the costs that this may incur on the tax base. I understand that. But we're looking at about $3.5 million. And I know that's perhaps more than what a school is seeing or what these students is in the facility. But we're starting from zero. We don't have a bank account with capital already invested in the 26. So we're starting from zero. And the hope is that we could get partly there. I know that we can fill the gaps for the rest of the construction. I'm not, I don't doubt that, because I, I know it looks like Sevastopol Charter has seen what options are out there, both state level, public, grant, nonprofit, private. There's lots of options there. What I want to see us do, if we can, with you as partners, is develop a protocol and a responsible relationship that would ensure that that property stays within this community and that we get to occupy it and use it and take care of it, and be able to engage in this relationship with each other over the years developing, you know, what we have here.
So what discussions have you had with the fairgrounds as the lease comes up? What discussions have you had with the city as that lease is maturing?
Right, so talk about, talk about land potential there. There is land potential there. The relationship right now with the fairgrounds is in transition. They have a new CEO who just came in, Pat Conklin, who just left, wonderful lady. We had a very good relationship with her, and she and the city have been working over the last couple of years trying to find out where they're gonna go next. The city itself, well, public, the city itself and the fairgrounds have been in a long stalemate over what happens with that property, as you know. And I know that you were involved to some extent in that conversation with the Kellerman site. So at this point in time, I believe the city and city council, you can call me if I'm wrong on this, but I believe the city council and, and the fairgrounds are in conversation about what's going to happen next. I believe the city has some ideas about that property that may or may not include the fairgrounds. And the fairgrounds is aware that they may or not be included in that, in that discussion. So whether or not the fairgrounds is able to renegotiate their lease with the city, their lease expires in 2023, I do not know. And I do not know what our place is in relationship to them.
So you're basically on the road?
We're on the outside, waiting for them to have a conversation.
Are there any other properties without naming them specifically?
There are a couple, but I do not know what the potential is without.
And they, I assume would be repurposed?
One would be repurposed, one perhaps developed from the old.
So how, how would this work if, if we were to incorporate a chunk of money to set aside for Live Oak? Would it be still within the district's ownership? Because that's really the only way I could see it working, if we're asking the taxpayers.
Using general obligation bond that belonged to Pedaluma City Schools, I believe any contribution would be, remains Pedaluma City School funds, and we paid off under our name over 30 years. So, you know, their campus, at least our investment in their campus, would be, belong to Pedaluma City Schools.
That's basically, I think, my literal what I'm suggesting. Because I want you to, I, I honor the risk that you take on in any financial endeavor that you take. And so I want to know, I want you to know that we understand that and we, we see this as a partnership. So if that property were to be invested in by you and we were able to develop that program there, if at any point in time the school were to, you know, not be there, if there was a change in charter law 30 years from now, the, the ability for the Pedaluma City Schools to retain value in that property and keep it within the public use is what we want to see happen.
The answer to that is, you may not need it. I, you know, I mean, honestly, I'm just being candid with you. It may not be needed at that point, so.
In that point, maybe, certainly, the property discharting would be the next step to take as a district. But that way, at least you get back for mouse and assume the property obviously don't. What's your investment worth then?
So I get that, you know, what we're saying, the money for the schools in our district, elementary schools, and what they're asking for, you know, the difference there, except for the fact that what they're saying is that they don't have anything, whereas our other schools have all these things already. Tell us one thing. And then two, I, I would just like to hear what everyone thinks.
I don't really understand, I guess, Steve. So basically, what we'd be doing is investing in real estate. And they would be responsible for building the facility and outfitting the facility with chairs, tables, and chocolate tubs they want to do. What they're asking is that we give them the money to purchase property or to do whatever they want? I mean, that part, I guess, their rotations on.
Again, under Prop 39, we would be providing them with, with space. And we would have at least part ownership of that based on any dollars put forward in the, in the bond. The other aspect of it is that you're operating as a nonprofit now, their own nonprofit. So as a nonprofit, if they cease to exist, the dollars will go back to, under our, under our current agreement, it comes back to the district, any, anything that they have. But again, you know, if it's a facility.
So let me give you this scenario and tell me how this plays out. That $3 million or whatever the number was goes into this bond measure, and the bond passes, and Matthew finds the perfect piece of vacant property. And they want to purchase it. And it's $3 million. And they purchase it, but never get any matching funds from anybody else. Continue at the fairgrounds for an extended period of time. What's the end game? How does that, who owns that? Whose is it? How does it?
So if it's.
And who controls the purchase of the property that Matthew decide? And I'm sorry, I mean it.
I believe it, it would be purchased under probably Pedaluma City Schools. And then if, if they're going to be using it, if it's being purchased with bond funds.
Okay, well, hang on, let me, let me finish the thought on that question.
Okay.
So one of the things that we talked about previously was that, this, and this was a might badly question. Who gets to decide what we do, when we do it, how much we're spending for it, and what it's gonna look like, and the whole thing? And that's a board decision, right? Once the bond is passed, and as long as it's on the list.
All the expenditures.
What happens when, in that scenario, if this bond passed and Live Oak says, "That's the one we want"? Does that come back here? Does that go through them? How does that work?
Expenditures, I believe even in, in LA and the like, the bond expenditures are still controlled by Pedaluma City Schools. It's, you're passing the resolution, you're, you control the expenditures, and you own what the expenditures are spent on. So it would have to be approved. You know, if they came up and found a site, it would have to be approved by this board if they're using bond funds.
Okay. Go, go, let me just finish my thought, if you don't mind. Going back to then the scenario of half the, 50 of the kids are from Old Adobe, 30 are from Wauwaw or whatever. So this district funds the acquisition of land. It sits there for a period of time. They're able to match some funds through, another bond is passed by Adobe, or somewhere else, or Wauwaw. And we've got multiple districts owning a piece of property. How does that untangle? If it had untangled?
Again.
I don't mean to be the naysayer, this is what I do for a living.
In all likelihood.
Exactly, how do we unwind whatever it is that we're doing?
In all likelihood, if they went to Old Adobe and said, "We have 40 of your students and we want you to provide us with two classrooms", Old Adobe would provide them with two classrooms on their campuses and offer that to them. I don't think they would come and agree to participate in property in Pedaluma City Schools that, that we're gonna own and have it where they own a portion of it.
He's gonna say, but if they did?
But if they did, you know, the title would probably have to be changed so that Pedaluma City Schools owns, you know, 80% and they own 20% of the city.
Would it have to be, the language have to be very specific? This money, 3.5 million or whatever amount it says on, has to be used for the purchase? What if, you know, they get some private donor that buys them the land and they want to use the $1 million or $3 million to build the school?
As you know, we, we do not spill out the specifics within the resolution or.
But I thought the resolution in the high school district, there was something about the purchase of land. So.
Yeah, we.
If we had it as an option in the elementary district, just the generic.
Yeah, going back through the school facility projects that are incorporated in here. I thought there was even.
It's hard to.
Yeah, the reason, we, we did build that into the secondary with the expectation that we would be purchasing property for Crossroads.
I'm sorry, what did you just say?
We built in.
The language.
Language to purchase.
In the, in the high school district.
Within the high schools, but we, the expectation was that we're not buying a new elementary school with this, with this bond. If we had to buy a new elementary school, we would have to go off for another bond.
So we would have to revise this tonight if we were going to.
Well, we could, again, the resolutions before you, resolutions can be modified at the meeting. And we could, and if that was the interest of the board, we could look at the language relative to, in the high school district, and incorporating it into that. That is actually in the ballot language, right? Not in the resolution itself, as I recall, so.
Steve, the ballot language and in the resolution, I don't remember seeing actual dollar amounts.
There's no, the only dollar amounts is 20 million.
A total of $1, but it was not broken down.
68, there's, there's no dollar amounts put to any of the items, that's not.
And the reality of a previous discussion we had before is that some things could cost less and some things could cost more.
Correct. I mean, our, our project list are estimates based on our experience in, in construction from our last bond.
So I, I have two questions. One, how would including them for the, what the requesting amount or another amount affect the projects that we want to do with this bond for the schools that we've already listed? And then, two, if we left it, if we added language revising this to include the purchase of property, could we then go back and work with them later to consider whether they would benefit from that?
So within the proposed $20 million that's recommended by administration this evening? No, I haven't seen, there he is, back in back. Greg, come on up. So Greg Isom with Isom Advisors with this.
No offense, but this is the smartest candidate.
So, so Greg, right now we have $20 million. I mean, our building program is just less than 19.4 million adds as we've developed. So we could add the language, and we had the language, I know what, and we only have to add it to the ballot language to make, to accomplish that, I think, and I have it.
You'd put it in the Appendix A ballot measure.
Right.
Put the measure in the project list.
And so basically, at the end of A4, the top paragraph of A4, it would read, "And are authorized to include facilities to be made available to charter schools operating in the district pursuant to the district's obligation of Prop 39, approved by the California voters in November 2000." That would allow us to spend dollars on Live Oak Charter. They're the only independent charter school that is chartered under Pedaluma City Schools and operating with 40 or more students that live in the elementary attendance area.
So we're talking about two things. One, that's something we would have to do tonight. And then two, whether we did that would be something that would come back to us later.
Well, I think what would happen if you added that language, catch your phone, Steve, if you added that language, basically, all you would be doing would be amending the resolution and the ballot to say that that's one of the projects, potentially.
That, that we could spend these resources on that school. Okay. On Live Oak Charter, yes?
So I'm gonna say.
I, I think we need to have the language. I think the question is, Greg, is, is, because I, I want to make sure that the public is aware of this number. The numbers look big when you're looking at 19.368. But this is not fancy stuff. This is trying to get the schools, you know, that are kinda old, you know, up to speed. And we did, they did a fabulous job with the last bond, you know, 23 years ago. But things get old, as you know, and as you're working with our, you know, retired furniture.
Repurposed.
Repurposed. Especially when we're talking about the technology portion, the bandwidth, the everything. This is not cushy at all, as far as the projects that we have on the list, and.
To speak to that, I mean, 23 years ago, it was half again as large. It was $30 million 23 years ago. Now we're.
We're trying to be.
In a more expensive time, only asking 20 million.
Right, and we're, but we're trying to be respectful of the taxpayers. Because we still aren't paying off, and there's gonna be an overlap between the old bonds and the new bonds. So the question is, could we have a different amount? Could we have a $23 million bond issue or 25 million? That's my question for you.
Yes.
So I remember, I remember we discussed this in, was it January?
Yeah, when we, when we did the survey results, we actually tested 30 million. And 30 million was supported at a $30 tax rate. And so, I mean, you, you always typically ask for a higher amount and come down lower, and ask low, then come high. And so then when we kind of started whittling down the needs of, of the facilities list, well, now we're down to the $20 million. And so as opposed to the $30 tax rate, which we asked in the survey, we actually don't need to generate a $30 tax rate, it could be a $20 tax rate. You know, so.
So we're trying to save money.
Well, again, because we did such a good job with the previous bonds, our needs are not what they were in 1992 when we started the program. You know, we continually, we use those resources to modernize the facilities. They're in a lot better shape than when we started then. We don't need to go back and have that, that amount. The, if we increased, did, we could modify the resolution. I mean, it's before the board, it's an action item. The one issue that we have, we're shooting for the June ballot. This is the last board meeting, that you can approve something for the June ballot. So you'd have to make the decision to do that tonight. And if you're looking at 20 million, $20, it's pretty, pretty much tracks in the elementary district, Greg, in regards to the increased cost, probably not perfectly. We have, I have some numbers that Greg had provided previously on a little, on some larger proposals for the elementary district.
So it sounds like what I'm hearing is that this is very doable. That that's raising, raising the amount and helping the section of the community. Phoebe and I, when we went out to their school, they were doing such amazing things and it's, if anybody could repurpose a desk, let me tell you. I mean, it's, 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 it's really, really a wonderful, wonderful school. It's an asset to our community. And so if there's anything that we could do to, to help, if it's reasonable and we can't do it, I would really like to.
So as you mentioned, bumping it up to 25 million?
Well, I, I mean, I mean, they're asking for 3.5 million, so that would go into 23.5. At 20, at 26.1 million, the cost per $100,000 of tax, one thing we have to be cognizant and aware of is we're asking for $29 per assessed valuation.
At the high school.
At the high school level. So was that $116 for a $400,000, I don't think it is, I got it here. But that's what it is. Yeah, 116. So.
And what are you asking at the elementary school level?
We're asking for 20, or $80 for $100,000 of assessed valuation.
So every million dollars costs how much?
I'm sorry? Well, 25.
Every million dollars costs how much per $100,000?
If you were to bump it to 23 million, the tax rate would probably be about $23.
Yeah, it'll be approximately $23. So with 23.5, it'd be about $23.
So it's about $23.
I would feel a lot better about this if this 3.2, 3.2 million dollars.
3.5.
3.5 million dollars was based on something other than what you based it on. Candidly, you haven't based it on, I mean, I don't.
Is there a parcel?
To be specific, the parcel that's purchased in North in Sevastopol.
But we're in Pedaluma.
I understand.
I mean, that's, to me, that's not, that doesn't give me a, hey, this particular piece, the county looked at, I'm gonna be feeling this.
So there's a, there's a couple, I totally understand. And what, and from an administrative perspective, because I'm a school minister, what I, what I would see is that you're, you, there are several decisions that have to be made soon, and other decisions that can be postponed. And so as you've discussed before, Steve, you adopt a budget, and some of those projects may become under, or some of those projects may come above. And what I would say is that understanding what happened in San Diego and LA Unified, they adopted their bond language. And then subsequent to that, the board and the charters, because it's a big district at that point in time, developed a committee that then kind of handles sort of an oversight body as an arm off of your board to negotiate all these other little particulars. So what I would ask is that, you know, be in the deadline soon, and it seems like this could be a good thing. If you're able to find a way to. If you're able to find a way to make language work for, for you as a board going forward, many of these other issues can be detailed further in negotiations between us as, as, you know, beneficial parties.
Uh, there's no question about that. I'm still right around the three and a half million dollars, so just the fact that it's here.
One of the likely differences between San Diego Unified and LA Unified and Pedalman City Schools is most of the charter schools within those districts, the vast majority, if not all, the students come from within those districts. I mean, if you're in the center of LA Unified, to get there, you'd be driving forty or whatever miles through LA to get to that school from someplace else. In this particular case, you know, our, we'd be far exceeding our obligation to Live Oak Charter by virtue of paying the entire cost. And so I think that needs to be part of the consideration. Our, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars would be, you know, their share. Again, they're not starting with the same facility, so I understand that issue. But they're looking for us to provide for most of the cost, because most of it will be matching funds with state and nonprofits. And it won't be other agencies or Live Oak Charter accounting for the sixty percent of the students who, who don't reside within the elementary district.
And just to clarify, Steve, again, because I have to ask the question, what happens? What if the, and it's probably not the case now, but what if the enrollment of students within our district goes down to twenty percent two years from now?
Yeah.
And what, you see what I'm saying?
Once it goes, if it was less than forty, if it was less than forty students, there's no obligation to Prop thirty-nine.
Right, but the bond's already been passed. So once it goes right to forty students, forty-one students, and then at what point are we, you know, is?
I, I think that's, for me, this is what I'm feeling. I think we need to put the language in. I think we need to decide on the number. But I also want to caution the audience that things can change. There might not be a piece of property that's right. This board has to approve the, how we spend this money. And if we aren't comfortable with what options are available, or if there's this sudden change in enrollment, or there's some other issue within our district that comes up, there's no, there's no guarantee. There is no guarantee of how we're going to spend this money. We have a list and a plan and a hope. But we, when, when push comes to shove, we make a decision here of what's best for the district as a whole.
Steve, there.
Well, one of my concerns is, since they're looking for property, that they don't find property within Pedalman City Schools.
Right.
The law changed a few years ago so that the charter school has to be chartered within the district that it resides. It can't be an adjacent district. So that, that could become problematic if, I mean, we could, if we left the bond at twenty million and said, we'll work with Live Oak Charter, it could necessitate the need for us to go out for a bond sooner than if the entire twenty million dollars was staying with Pedalman City Schools. But we don't necessarily have to change the amount, just the language to be able to incorporate Live Oak Charter into this. And if they are successful in finding a facility within Pedalman City Schools tenants area that this board could support, then we, we would be working with them to determine how much of the current bonds would we contribute to, to that project. The real impact would be the modernization component for Pedalman City Schools, because those are the dollars that we're actually going to spend later. And that's the biggest portion of the, of the resources that we're talking about.
You're saying it could come back that we wouldn't be able to then do what we necessarily would need to do at many of your schools?
Correct. Not with, not within this bond measure. Greg?
One thing is by Prop thirty-nine as well, and the law says that if you pass a bond in Pedalman City, the funds have to be spent within the district, so that there's no way that a charter school could then build outside of the district.
Right.
It's a lot. Another thing to consider as well is that, just as you were mentioning, that the language that you have on the project list, that doesn't guarantee that every single thing's going to get completed.
Right. As.
And we've, we've worked with a lot of school districts who have grandiose ideas and they only accomplished half of them. We had some districts that, you know, were able to accomplish everything under budget and they just had a couple million dollars left over and then you don't sell it and you don't get taxed on it and it just sits there. So there's lots of options to choose from when moving forward.
So we have to decide tonight whether we increase the amount or whether we just add the language.
Right.
Those are, those are the choices.
Yeah, if you increase the amount, you have to add the language. You can not increase the amount and add the language and, you know, Live Oak Charter would be available to use the resources. They would have to come back and work with the board as to how much of the resources would make sense for us to contribute. And again, you know, I think we, you need to look at our Prop thirty-nine requirement and what we're required to provide to them.
So I am not a finance person and I'm sitting next to two, and maybe Phoebe as well because of her business background. But what are your thoughts on raising the amount? Whether it's twenty-one million, twenty-three million?
My preference would be not to raise the amount, because we're asking a lot from our voters and we're really asking more of the high school district, because that's where our intense needs are.
Do you foresee if we don't raise the amount, being able to have money to help Live Oak?
At this point, you know, there's, I would say there's six hundred thousand dollars that is unaccounted for. Again, we could use that for escalation. But as Greg said, we may not be able to do everything we want to accomplish, but yes, if the board chooses to, we can use some of these resources to support Live Oak Charter with a change to the ballot language.
I guess I worry, since we already have so much of it earmarked, I worry that that would become a struggle if we don't raise the amount, even if we didn't raise it the full twenty-three or raise it to twenty-five. I feel like if we don't raise it, I feel like, I feel like raising it at all would make us responsible later for, we raised this so we would help. And I feel like if we don't, we're kind of not as accountable down the road. I kind of feel like we would like, well, you know, we said we could try if we could, but we haven't gotten half of our stuff done. Yeah, I just feel like, but if we raised it, here discussing this, that we would be a little accountable to work with Live Oak. And you know, three of these board members may not be here in nine months. So I feel like that's a little.
No, just two.
Well, myself, myself, but the three of us, three of us may be gone by, very soon. So I feel like, and that's the majority of this board, I feel like that would be a little accountability that the two of them sitting here and if you're here whenever this comes to fruition, if it should, is remember, we raised this, it was a very serious decision for us to ask our city to pay more money, but we did that so we could do this.
Yeah, but see, I think that that incorrectly puts this project at the top of the list.
No, I think it just puts it on the list.
No, no, well, you can put it on the list without raising anything, but that incremental part that you raised then becomes the money that goes to this school. And we haven't treated any of the money that way at all. We've treated it as, this is our list of projects and we haven't prioritized a single thing. Just by saying that, you just prioritize the topping. And I don't think that's something that I'm comfortable with tonight.
I don't know why prioritize is the top.
Well, you just said, it's our obligation.
No, it's just we made this project list without them in mind at all. So when we started thinking about, okay, this costs this much and this costs this much and this might be this and maybe we could do that, and here's our projects, they were not included. And so to now say, okay, we'll take some of that stuff away from us, from what we were going to do for Grant and McNear and Valley Vista and Penn go, well, we're going to take some of that away now and give it to them. I feel like as we get moving, that will be very hard to do.
I think there's going to be five projects on it that are going to be very hard to do, because we very easily could run out of money.
And so I feel like now we're, you know, we, that's, this is a big thing though. This is, this is a whole school. It's not like they need some extra stuff. It's a whole, I mean, it's big. So I just feel like if we're gonna, if we're gonna attempt to carve out even a tiny section of that big endeavor of theirs, I, I just don't know if it's reasonable to lump it with the projects we already have.
Well, but again, I don't think that we've properly identified what that endeavor is, three and a half million dollars again being some number. And comparing it with the actual obligation of the district, because there's a lot of nice to haves and then there's a lot of great to have, and just being candid again, but then there's also the seven hundred, seven thousand, three hundred and whatever students that aren't going to this school that are still on that list too. We have an obligation to all of them. So I'm with you, but I'm struggling with that. I'm okay with the language.
Yeah.
I'm absolutely okay with putting the language in there. I'm a little concerned about jacking the amount up a little bit, because I'm a little concerned about passing the whole thing.
Yeah, I mean, it.
And that's the bigger picture, because, because three and a half million dollars of nothing, still nothing.
This is easier, this is.
But it sounds like from what he says.
The next slide that we're going to talk about is the more difficult. The high school, because we're asking for more, high schools tend to have a harder time approving general obligation bonds.
But it does sound like the numbers he's said and he's given us was for a much larger amount though.
If we, but if we increase the elementary, the elementary will pass. The question is, does it impact the high school passing?
Does it mean the high school won't pass?
Because the high school's the, the bigger hurdle. We know because, you know, we included all of our desires on here, virtually all of them pulled greater than fifty-five percent. There are a couple that are right there on the cusp that we included, because those are things that we believe are necessary for our high school district. And so my bigger concern is jumping up the amount to even twenty-three dollars per hundred thousand dollars and then asking for twenty-nine dollars for the high school district. And do they, they both carry the day? I think a good example is Greg was in charge of Old Adobes and we know that's a tougher demographics than Pedalman City Schools. And they did pass by a wide margin their, their general obligation bonds in two thousand and twelve. That was, that was a close election. And we know even from our experience, you know, that's been, you know, you can go back and look at where the votes came from that supported, and that's more difficult. That's our high school district. And so, you know, I don't, they won't be paying any portion of this.
But they may not vote for the high school, because they're in our high school.
We need more than fifty-five percent of the people to support our high school district fund when we get to that. And that's where our greatest needs are.
So by adding the language but not increasing the amount, it would allow Live Oak to do their homework, find a site, find a piece of property within the Pedalman City School District, come to us if hopefully this bond will pass, come to us once we actually get down to where we're spending this money and say, look, we have a great piece of land we want to buy, we want to, I mean, at that point, if the bond is passed, it's, it would be on them to come to us to say, look, we, we wanted one point five million from you to purchase this property here. Right, and at that point, I mean, we're at least allow, opening the door to them to come to us if the bond passes.
Puts it in.
It puts it in, but it made to.
It at least allows them to, like, you know, it's now on our list of potential projects.
It's, yeah, we've acknowledged it by putting it in the ballot measure that we're willing to contribute towards Live Oak Charter's facility needs.
And, and then how does, I guess that, so it's, that's all we need to decide, perceive of me?
Well, the two I have.
Yeah, we would have to decide.
The amount.
We're not going to ask for more after this, this is it.
We need to, the amount, and it sounds like the board.
Let me, let me ask this, Steve. Is everybody here on board with the language in there?
Yes.
Are you on board with putting the language in?
Yes.
So you would need, so now we just need to talk about dollars.
Right.
Right.
What's your, again, I'm sorry, but about, what's the amount on per million?
Per hundred thousand?
Yeah, yeah, per hundred thousand, per million, per hundred thousand, about.
I mean, as I said, right now, twenty million is a, is a twenty dollar tax rate and it's pretty much, pretty much every million dollars is an increase of about a dollar. A lot of that can also change based on the assessed valuation of our district. Now, if the assessed valuation of the district goes higher, well, then the overall tax rate will be lower.
I mean, the maximum we could ask for in the elementary district is thirty million.
We don't need that.
We're not, we're not talking about increasing that amount. That's, that meets our Prop thirty-nine, that would be the thirty dollars per hundred.
What are your thoughts on raising it from twenty to twenty-two or twenty-one? I mean.
We have this all on you.
That's fine, I mean, I'll be very honest, I'll be very honest. I don't, I don't, my professional opinion is, I mean, twenty million dollars to twenty-three million dollars, it's, it's a big chunk of money. I mean, I don't think someone's going to say, I would have supported you at twenty, but no way at twenty-three million. You know, I, I think another thing to also consider is you can actually raise the amount to twenty-three million, but you can still keep the tax rate at twenty dollars. But just realize that it might take a little bit longer as opposed to getting your money within, you know, six to seven years. Well, maybe, because we're keeping the tax rate at twenty dollars, it'll take you an extra three years to get that money.
Right, so you issue later. And you can't do the projects, you do the projects later when you issue later. I mean, that's what's funding the projects. The other thing that we could do is we could change the thirty-year bonds and, and which is not what we're recommending against that.
And I see what you're saying. I mean, I just, I feel like we need to increase it so we have room. I didn't mean to say that if we do twenty-one point five, that means one point five is earmarked for them. I just, I just feel like we already kind of committed that twenty million to, to our stuff.
Well, and actually, I have to say, to, to argue against what you're saying, I don't know that the twenty million's actually going to cover all of this.
Right.
So if, if we raised it, it gives us some flexibility for projects that could come in at a higher cost that we have to do.
And there's still no guarantee that Live Oak's going to have money.
I just, I just feel it'd be hard for me to, to, when they come to us in six months and say, we've got this, it'd be really hard for me.
We won't, we won't have the money in six months.
With just the twenty million.
We'll have a third of the money in, we'll probably have thirty of the money in six months.
If you pass it, you know, it typically takes about three months to get it, so you can have that money.
But we have a lot of urgent needs that have to be dealt with.
And that's me. I think we'd be wanting to get that done.
So it's the plan, I feel like, challenge.
So if we went to twenty-one, it would be about twenty-one dollars.
Or, as I said, or you just keep the tax rate at twenty.
Just have it take longer.
And then, and then we don't issue during.
But then, but then Matthew comes back tomorrow or two weeks from now with the perfect site and then all of a sudden, at that lower amount, that pushes back other projects on the maintenance side credit, if we spent that money early.
Well, there's, that's the issue where we get to decide, no, we can't spend that money.
So, okay, here's one thing. I think we have two separate, sort of two separate discussions going here.
Yes.
One is, do we have enough money to do everything there? And do we have enough left over to do something here?
Right.
Okay. Or do we not have enough money to do everything there? Do we need to move that? But to me, I'm still, my, my struggle is, I, we have to not sell this. And I don't want to sell, and I don't think that we will be successful to sell a, I mean, those are numbers based upon something. This three and a half million dollars, I don't need to keep going back to this, but it's just some number. And quite honestly, it's Christmas, it's too. And based upon the number of children that go to your school that are in this district, it's dramatically more than everybody else is getting. And I don't want to have that fight. To me, that in an election year, that's a fight. And I don't know that that's a defendable fight and it's just kind of a squirrely fight. I think that we should include the language for sure. I would be okay with a small increase, but I just have to make sure, to your point, that everybody leaves this room understanding that there's a list and that that list, you would be on it, but it's a list. And that there are dramatic needs on there. And I, I would not feel comfortable and I would want you to leave knowing that if you came back and said, hey, we found the perfect site, give us three and a half million dollars, the answer back might be, here's a million. You know what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
I hear you.
Because that is the obligation of the district and we have to run the entire district for all seven thousand five hundred, for everybody else. You know, hey, let's finish what we're doing in a few minutes. So I would be okay with, you want to throw a million bucks on there, make it sixty bucks a month even for everybody, right? I mean, that's kind of a nice round number. And include them in the language? Did I say sixty, fifty? It's a nice round number and, and we go from there? Does that get you in a better place?
So the motion was made by Mary. So you would have to make, revise your motion and then the second would have to.
To include language to have charter and increase it to twenty-one.
I'm okay with that, I'm stronger.
That would be my motion.
And the second was? Phoebe?
Sorry, could you second that? Sorry. Including language that would allow us to.
So we change it to twenty-one million dollars in, in the bond and we would include So we change to twenty-one million dollars in, in the bond and we would include the charter language in the ballot measure?
Yes, I would second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Y'all are gonna go pound on doors, right? Help us get this bond passed?
We promise that. We build the room.
Yeah, you did. And set Talia up here, which was just not nice. No, I have no discussion.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. You're in.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So item number eight would be the second half of this discussion. And I've got a final... Resolution twenty, uh, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen dash sixteen. Board of Education, Villanueva County, High School District, the county of Sonoma, State of California, ordering an election authority to issue a school general obligation bond establishing specifications of the election order and requesting consolidation of other elections occurring on June third, two thousand fourteen.
Second question?
Okay, Steve, you have the...
Yeah, just, we have the common projects that we've already reviewed. You know, in addition to that, in the, in the secondary district, we have significantly more projects going back to... So the ones that are unique, of course, include athletic fields and PE facilities on campuses. We, performing arts centers on high school campuses. Those have been a longtime desire of the community and this board. Unfunded, obviously, as we... As we continue to move forward. And those are really the additional projects that are being contemplated for the secondary district. And, oh yeah, we have the Kennelworth obligation from the construction of that. The difference between the sale of the former Kennelworth site and the construction of the new site.
Okay, so same deal, twenty-five years, tiered, tiered draws or whatever, what do you call them?
Three issues series. So three, yeah, three issues. The prior, the priority will be the, you know, the technology components. And, and then early on in the project, modernization occurs, will occur later in the project. For one thing, the, you know, it takes twenty years to be eligible for modernization. Pelham Heights, our older campuses are, are eligible earlier. They will be the first ones that we'd be looking at in some of the later issues. But again, we're looking at trying to expand the dollars within, within the next ten years as part of this resolution.
I will throw it. Sir, you have another five minutes if you'd like to speak.
You don't have to. It's certainly not an obligation at nine oh three.
We love having issues.
I'm teasing, of course.
It's the same issues that you shared before in regards, I'm sure. Yeah. Technology. We know adding technology will increase our general fund cost if we don't have the dollars. You can't have those type of expenditures within this. And it will become a requirement for general fund to keep things operating, keep our teachers trained in the use of the technology. We're talking about, you know, that tech package. So every classroom has the same technology throughout the district. Right now, it's a hodgepodge with some haves and have-nots. And this bond measure addresses that issue that has been a desire of this board.
Well, and I'd also like to point out that the, the technology component really gets to why we're here. And that is the educational service that we provide. And with Common Core and with the new assessments, we need to have this in order to be able to be efficient with what we're trying to accomplish in educating these kids. So that's the only point.
College and career readiness, I mean, that's the mantra. And this allows us to provide that for students in our district.
And remember what we're talking about here is simply asking the voters to decide if they support.
Correct.
Okay. Any other comment on that?
And there's one remark I would like to make in that context.
Yes.
Too often have I seen that we start from the premise, "We have a technology. Now I'm looking for a problem which I can solve with it."
That's true.
And that's the wrong approach.
That's very true.
The true approach must be, "I have a problem and which technology can help me solve it?" Not the other way around.
Absolutely.
No, that's very insightful, sir. It's very true. I had a long argument last night about getting a new iMac, just using that theory alone.
Me versus one.
But we are really focused at this point on using technology as a tool. So it's not the technology, in fact, we just made another meeting today, not the technology that is the focus. It is the instruction that's the focus and the technology is the tool that could get some different kinds of instruction going. But it is the instruction that's the focus, not the technology.
Yes.
But then the training of the teacher must be an ongoing training. And it's not a one-time shock. It must continue and continue and continue.
Yes.
We always used to say that the up-and-coming teacher needed to be bilingual and I think they also need to be computer science. And that's the other piece when people come up that it's...
It's, it's a little bit awkward if the third grader knows more about the tool than you do.
The digital native versus...
Phoebe and I did the TLT government day yesterday and some of the high school kids were commenting on, on some of those issues. That we explained to them that this is all new.
Tomorrow's leaders today. I mean, that's your, I mean, that's...
They were talking about knowing a little bit more technology-wise than some of the teachers.
Any other specific discussions regarding this bond?
You haven't answered any questions the board has?
I got a motion in a second.
Don't they? Yes, I think.
We're not including language because we don't have an independent charter school under our high school district.
Correct.
Nobody out there?
Nobody's here.
It's the purchase of property, isn't it?
That, that's...
Yeah, the purchase of property is, is in this language, yes.
Right. Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Okay, let's go to item nine, financial reports discussion. Anybody have any discussion questions about the financial...
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Say, Fred, on? No discussion on that? Okay, moving on to the next. Oh, that's it? There's no more? Okay. Public report of action taken in closed session. I would like to remind those who are watching at home that we had a closed session before this started. At that time, we were presented with a set of facts regarding four new students and some disciplinary issues. And this is a report out based upon those discussions and then we will vote on the recommended motion. So case number thirty, excuse me, case number thirty. Case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance with board policy and to allow continuing enrollment in a district-operated school under mandated conditions. Student suspended expulsion status may affect for the spring semester of two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year and the fall semester of two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program and screenings, community service and appropriate academic performance.
So moved. Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Posed? So that's four. And again, I'm sorry. And again, remembering that this is all based upon information that was in closed session. So these aren't just thrown out voting. Case had been presented, case number thirty-one, case had been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continuing enrollment in a district-operated community day school under mandated conditions. Student suspended expulsion status may affect for the spring semester of two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year and the fall semester of the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program and screenings, a common theme, it seems, community service and appropriate academic performance. I'm allowed to editorialize the rulings, aren't I? All...
So moved. Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Four oh one. Case thirty-two, case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continuing enrollment in a district-operated school under mandated conditions. Student suspended expulsion status may affect for the spring semester of the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year and the fall semester of the fourteen, fifteen school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program and screenings, community service and appropriate academic performance.
So moved. Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Four oh one. And the last one, case thirty-three. Case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance with board policy and to allow continuing enrollment in a district-operated school under mandated conditions. Student suspended expulsion status may affect for the spring semester of the thirteen, fourteen school year and the fall semester of the fourteen, fifteen school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program and screening, community service and appropriate academic performance.
So moved. Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Four oh one.
Troy, before you move on and, Jerry, I just wanna confirm with the board on the earlier action to revise the elementary resolution that we were doing two things actually, the ballot language and adding the language for this, purchase of property because that was the other component of it.
Right, right.
That the elementary didn't have.
Had that language, it has that.
But that was, that was the revisions that was moved by Mary and second by Phoebe, okay?
That's what she moved, that's what she said in the first one.
That's, that's, that's why I thought, just wanna...
That's correct. Uh, future business.
Uh, the next meeting will be the second interim report.
Is that the March eleventh?
March eleventh. There's only one meeting in March, the March eleventh meeting.
Okay. I will take the motion to the board.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.